Okay, so I'm going to call to order this Board of Education meeting. It is Tuesday, November 1st, 2022. We're in the Nashua North Boardroom and it is 6:09 PM. I apologize for our lateness. Wanted to give you guys time to sign up as needed. We have a full house tonight. Ms. Raymond, can you do the roll call, please?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Ms. Darling?
Here.
Okay. Mr. Claffey?
Here.
Ms. Julia is not here this evening. I'm here. Ms. Lampier?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Oden?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
And Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Okay. We have Dr. Andre, Dr. Sarfi, Mr. Pasca, and Mr. Donovan. And I thought I saw Ms. Duffy earlier. Is she not here anymore? Okay. May I imagine?
She's here for that one-minute HR meeting.
Okay. And the prayer. Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. Amen. Thank you. Mr. Claffey, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the nine states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Let's just jump right into the meat of this agenda. I'm going to pass this over to Mr. Pasca and Dr. Andre.
Good evening. Do you want to move? We're here tonight, and I have some friends with me, Mr. Burns, the Nashua North High School Principal, Mr. Oddly, one of the assistant principals at South, and Ms. Hackett, Director of Guidance at North. I'm here to kind of present them and set the stage of some of the work that they've started, and we are now continuing. And we wanted to present some of this work to the board at this time. If you look to the slide, you can see, you know, the portrait of a learner. Also can be interchanged with portrait of a graduate or vision of a graduate. And I want to just kind of go back a few weeks ago when we were here to present our vision of high-quality instruction and our need to move the system forward with a focus on students, a focus on collaboration, and a focus on results. This portrait of a learner work continues that work and is embedded and ties in very nicely with it. Although we have, you know, high school representatives here to talk about this work, this is work that needs to occur pre-K to 12. And Mr. Burns and Mr. Richards will be the first ones to tell you that in June, when they're celebrating their graduates at the ceremony at Stellows, you know, they're there to present their graduates, but it's a culmination of 12 years' worth of work of everyone in the district, pre-K to 12, to getting our students across the stage. And this work kind of embodies a lot of that work and embraces the concept of what we want to identify our graduates to look like at each grade level, along their pathways, and it strives to give students an identity of what success should look like along the way. So with that being stated, I'd ask Mr. Burns to start the next part of the presentation.
I'm sorry, do we need to hit the lights that are not taped? Yep. Hooray! Thank you.
All right. Good evening. Thank you. So a lot of this work falls back to 2018 when Nashua North and Nashua South went through their reaccreditation process for NEASC. And in that year, we were in basically the last cycle of the original or the previous NEASC settings. And now the new standards have come out, and they're asking us to look at a variety of different things. And one of the pieces that came out of our accreditation was to focus on one of the 2020 standards, which is the vision of a graduate. And basically, what they're asking us to do is develop and implement a plan to explicitly include 21st century learning expectations for students. Now, we did have some of this included in our prior years where we were assessing students on competencies. We made the initial shift for competencies about 10 years ago. During that time, we separated the academic piece from the skills, much like critical thinking, communication, a lot of the behaviors as well, attendance. Those things were kind of taken out of the classroom, and we were still trying to report on that, but it was really superficial at the time. The 2020 standards for NEASC really puts that focus on a variety of different things. So one is on career pathways. How do you get to the end? What are you going to be doing moving forward? What are you going to do academically, your learning expectations? And then the other piece is also focusing on those standards and behaviors, the habits of mind that makes you, you know, prepared and ready to go into the future. So getting at the why. So one, obviously, this is something that we have to do in order for us to maintain accreditation moving forward. Both high schools have to come up, or the district has to come up with, a portrait of a learner, portrait of a graduate, or vision of a graduate. They're all kind of the same terminology, meaning the same types of things. But what we really want to do is kind of look at an alignment of K to 12, our vertical alignment, working together. We know that we want to kind of focus on the end in mind. Where do we want our students to be as they graduate from Nashua North or Nashua South? But we also want to focus on how do we get them there? And each year kind of builds one upon the other, and it goes all the way back to pre-K. So we have to kind of set up this opportunity to get everybody working together throughout the district and kind of figure out what that vision is and what it looks like as we move forward from year to year. This is also going to create and go back to creating a direction for staff, a direction for students, and we know where we have to get. It allows us to kind of build not only on our curriculum, but also on how we prepare our students for some of this future. So that, I'm going to hand it over to Nick. He's going to talk a little bit about the timeline, where we've been, and where we're going.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. So as Mr. Burns had said before, when we first made our switches over to the competency-based system, knowing that we had to take a look at how behaviors need to be addressed, and we need to look at how to help students grow in certain areas, but, you know, if those were being pulled out of the assessment process, how do we make sure that we put a light on those? So back in 2014, 2015, as we were making our shifts, and our new report card came out, what we called our school-wide 21st century competencies were placed in our report card. So there's a place for those to be reported out on. And, you know, working through our process of doing our self-study, going into the NEASC accreditation process, we recognized the importance of these, but also the importance of maybe to keep looking at how we can most effectively put a highlight on those and also help students grow in those areas. And with the shift that NEASC had taken on with the vision of a graduate, with the new terminology moving away from a mission statement, going to that, it actually aligned with a lot of what we were trying to do, but now it's how do we create that vision to be in sort of a K through 12 model with common language that can be also delivered through report card, through the report cards, but also give students good feedback on how to grow in those areas. We then had the opportunity to connect with the New Hampshire Learning Initiative, NHLI, and they are sort of positioned to help us do this work. So in working with them, they helped us look, work with other districts around the state that have been doing this work already, so we have a lot of exemplars to take a look at and pick and choose things that we like from that. They also are really critical in helping us create the surveys that went out in 2020 that we had sent out to all stakeholders, and we'll show you some results of that in a second. And then taking those results also and looking at the data that came out of those to help us kind of understand where we, as a community, put our importance, what behaviors we look at, and then how do we move forward with those. And then leading into the work that we're doing right now. So taking those data, creating SMART goals, and making sure that we are doing this work not in small groups, in the silos, but we're working together to create clarity going forward. So the next slide shows a little bit of data that we came out of our surveys, and it was incredibly interesting for us across all stakeholders, between students at all three levels, teachers at all three levels, and parents. Communication was the number-one thing that everyone saw as the most critical skill for our students to develop and show as they are leaving us into their next steps. Also, adaptability was the second one across all stakeholders. Our students recognized creativity as something that they embrace across all levels as their third-most important. Teachers and parents looked at critical thinking as an incredibly important value for them to hold. So what we saw here through this survey is we do have a pretty good understanding of what it is that we want our students to exhibit, both our students ourselves and the teachers and parents as well. And through that process, we know that we have great sort of a start here, a foundation, that can roll into the work that we've already done. The next slide shows a little bit, talks about the challenges that we faced in the last couple of years. Obviously, you know, doesn't need to be overstated, but the pandemic had a big impact on us working some of this, making some of this work go forward. Although I will say, the use of deploying Google Classroom, I know was a great benefit to us and able to reach people much quicker, so some of our communications line opened up a little bit. But obviously, meeting and working together was hampered quite a bit. Also, we've had a lot of turnover in the last number of years that made it hard to kind of solidify our work going forward. And then also with some of the teacher contracts, it's hard to do this committee work if we don't have stakeholders available, and that kind of got in our way a little bit. So now, moving forward, we're kind of positioned where we can have a large group, representation from all stakeholders, to kind of weigh in on what this looks like going forward. And I will hand off to Ms. Hackett.
All right. So we attend these conferences, the Future Learning Pathways Conferences, about quarterly. So we did this all last year, and it's really a great opportunity to collaborate with other districts in the state, to kind of see where they are at with this similar process, to look at their portraits, and to be able to network and kind of reflect on where we are. So this is what we kind of started with last year in 2021. So it's kind of where we are, where we want to be, and kind of the questions that we're going to address along the way. So really, these are kind of small, but the current state, we said that, you know, we've begun the discussions, and we kind of know what we need to do. It's just getting stakeholders involved and kind of getting the word out. So that's kind of where this begins tonight. We're here kind of starting the conversation with the BOE and community. Our desired state, so we definitely want to ensure equitable access so that aligns with the district goals. We want to create a visual representation in common language from K through 12 to address the portrait of a learner. So we'll literally have a visual of what the portrait of a Nashua learner looks like and then have the competencies that align with it. You know, it's all about K-12. This conversation is all about K-12. We need to get more stakeholders from all levels. Right now, we're high school-based, so we really need to get that team together to be able to make it K through 12. And then we want to align the career pathways. We currently have high school career pathways, but that is something that we need to, you know, we want the conversation to start at all levels about career planning. We don't just want it to be a high school thing. So that is definitely work we need to do, but we need to get the stakeholders from the other levels involved. And the questions along the way are just kind of how do we generate buy-in? What will students need to know to show competencies? How can we measure success? And how do we find time to bring everyone together? And so that leads us to this year, the work that we've done. We've had one conference, and we created our SMART goal, which is to develop a pre-K through 12 portrait of a learner for the Nashua School District by June of 2024. So those pieces of that goal include evaluating the data from the survey. So the survey data has already been collected, but we really need to analyze and evaluate it as a team and as a district. Create a subcommittee to look at other districts' portraits, so we'll do that at the conferences that we attend. And again, just to see how other districts are doing this process, we're going to look at the alignment of the career pathways and the alignment of curriculum pre-K through 12. And then we also want to look at the PRIDE acronym, which Nick will talk about in a minute. So those are competencies that are similar to what the survey results came back, competencies that we want our learners to exhibit. And so we'll kind of look at developing rubrics for those and also developing the competencies that align with those.
Yeah, so I wanted to just present this, and I have to, no, I can't take any credit for this. So I'm presenting this, I asked for permission to show this, from a teacher group that got together this summer of South teachers. They felt like they wanted to impact sort of the tenor of our building coming into this year, coming out of the hard, you know, couple of years of the pandemic. And so this was some organic thing that they created as a way to create a statement that was deliverable to all the students in a pretty easy way. They put them on T-shirts, second-day of school, every staff member in the building, like when I say every staff member, I mean, every single staff member in the building wore one of these shirts with this on the back. These posters are up all over the place. They're in every classroom, they're in the hallways. And it really, you know, it created sort of a living thing. And I think that's an important thing to remember about this. You know, we've all seen mission statements that get put on walls, and people can recite them, but, you know, is there buy-in? Is there meaning to that? This thing lives in our building right now, and it's something that people have a lot of pride in. You know, we're getting a kid group together, a student group together, that's going to be a, you know, they're coming up with their own acronym, a Student Pride or Student Paws Group, that's sort of going to be the student version of this to bring that message forward to their peers. And one of the things I took away from our most recent work was, you know, a lot of the times, I'm sure a room like us, we could sit and we could, you know, argue about semantics and word choice and forever and ever about trying to craft a perfect word statement. And really, what they were saying is, you know, we can all agree about the basics, right? We all agree that, you know, from our survey, communication is really important. Well, a lot of these things have to do with positive communication, right? The respectful communication, inquisitive questioning. You know, if we don't get so much bogged down in the semantics of the words we choose, but how do we get this thing out there to be a living, breathing thing? And this is such a great example of what happened in our building this summer, and this is the kind of work that we want to do, really meaningful, really authentic, and showing progress already. And if, you know, we got a group of teachers that can do that together this summer, we really are hopeful and excited to get a group of all stakeholders together to continue this work. So we have something that all Nashuans can look at and believe in and be supportive of.
You know, I think this time, I really want to take the time to acknowledge the efforts of Nate and Nick and Jackie, along with Mr. Richard, the principal at Nashua South, to keep this work going forward in some challenging times and to push us to go forward with this. As you can hear from just what Nick just said, the passion and the commitment to this work because they believe that it's what's best for our students here in Nashua is necessary. But you also heard the need to expand the scope of this work to get others involved so we have the perspective of a variety of different stakeholders. So as you can see from this slide, over the next week or so, we'll be reaching out to different stakeholders to ask them to join this group with the hope of when we go back to our next NHLI meeting in December, that we can have a more complete group to kind of tackle this work so we can work towards our goal of having this portrait of a graduate in place for June of 2024, and be happy to continue to come back to provide some updates about the projects that we're making along the way. So with that being said, do you have any questions for us as we embark on this work and probably recruit some of you for all, some of this work as well?
This sounds amazing. I love that we're, I mean, I know we've always followed students from beginning to end, but this creates just such a distinct path that everybody can see and, you know, everybody's going to benefit from. It doesn't feel like each grade is such a silo anymore. It's just, it's more cohesive. So I think it's fantastic, and I love how much work you guys have put in into making this accessible for everybody. I think getting buy-in from the community is certainly something that is always going to benefit us, and I think you guys did a great job in putting it together. And I will pass it off for questions because I don't have any right now. Ms. Raymond?
Thanks. First, I want to say a giant kudos to the teachers at South who put together the PRIDE thing, and then everybody else for putting on the shirts and stuff. That's really cool. What a great way to come back to school. So I just think that's so neat. The beginning of your slideshow, you referenced that way back in 2018, we had the NEASC accreditation come. And I don't remember how long does that, until they come back again? Is that five years or 10?
So it's a 10-year cycle?
10 years.
But we sometimes have to do different reports. We, both North and South, had a two-year report and a five-year report that we had to submit. So our five-year report will be due next year.
Okay.
But the work has to continue. So we actually do have to report on, you know, the work we've done with Portrait of a Learner. We haven't had a ton to add yet, but we've talked about it being in process and looking forward to really getting it going.
Okay. And then I remember reading the two-year report. Is there feedback that they give back? Like when you send in your update next year, incorporating all of this great work that you guys are planning on doing this year, will they give feedback on that?
They give a little bit, but they wouldn't take a deep look at it if we developed any Portrait of a Learner. I'm sure we could send it and say, hey, are we on the right track? I think going back to that FLP thing, that's where we're going to get a lot of the feedback and working with other school districts that are further along in the process. Some have already presented, some have already gone through the new rubric, so, and new standard. So we've got some experts that know what to expect.
Yeah, I mean, it looks great. I'm not really actually concerned about constructive criticism from them so much. I'm just thinking back in 2018, how excited they were about our competency grading. And I don't know that the board at the time expected the overwhelmingly positive response that we had gotten from them. So I'm looking forward to it. Thanks.
No questions? That's been a good presentation.
PowerPoint masters.
All right. Well, thank you so much. We're looking, we're looking forward to seeing all of the information being presented along the way. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll do it in a sec. Now onto the business part, which is no fun. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda, and the dates on that are the October 11th, 11th, 12th, 24th, and 25th, and the fiscal year 23 September financial report.
Thank you. And Mr. Claffey seconded. Okay. Any comments or questions on the consent? Nope. Seeing none? All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
That's Ms. Brown and Ms. Johnson.
Yep.
This brings us up to our first public question and comment period focused on items that are on the agenda. We have an initial 15-minute time limit. I know we have a lot of people here. If you haven't signed up, please sign up on the sheet before we grab it. Is there anybody who didn't sign up that wants to speak? Okay. Mr. Claffey, if you could grab that, that would be fantastic. Want to remind everybody that during question, I'm sorry, during public comment period, try to keep to a three-minute, three-minute comment. Sorry, I keep saying comment. There's probably a different word for that. I can give you reminders if you need to, but I think everybody who's speaking, we've spoken before, and you guys are pretty good about it. So I know I don't have to be, I don't even have the mallet thing. So first up is Divya Nagri. Its name's crossed off.
So I'm Divya Nagri, a 14 Annabel Court in Nashua. I'm just here today because I just want to read out a petition that parents in the Nashua School District put together. We've collected signatures, and I just wanted to present that to the board. Okay? So I'm just going to read that out loud. So to the Nashua Board of Education, and it's titled, "Rescind the May 12, 2022 Motion Removing Weighted GPA and Class Rank for Current High School Students," and "To Reinstate the Weighted GPA for Future High School Students." So to the Nashua Board of Education and Nashua School District Administration, we, the undersigned parents of students in the Nashua School District, respectfully request the Board of Education to rescind the motion on May 12, 2022 that removes class rank and weighted GPA, starting from the class of 2024 and subsequent classes. Major changes to the GPA system for students already in the system is not fair and was not recommended by district educators, administration, and the district-appointed class-ranked task force members. Therefore, current high school students who already made decisions based on one system should continue under that same GPA system and not have the rules changed mid-game. We request the weighted GPA metric to stay for future high school students. Weighted and unweighted GPA is wholly based on individual student effort and is not a direct comparison to other students. Weighted GPA provides an additional tool for students to assess their progress towards academic goals and complements the unweighted GPA. The class-ranked task force studied the impact of class rank on students' mental health. However, they did not study the impact of removing weighted GPA from a student's academic record. Removing weighted GPA was not part of the class-ranked task force survey questions that were sent to students and parents. The survey questions all focused on class rank. So extrapolating survey answers to discontinue weighted GPA along with rank is a big reach and not fair. Removing weighted GPA will disadvantage students in all academic levels, but will especially negatively impact the group of students that this was intended to help. Students who are on the fence on taking higher rigor classes will be discouraged. It would also discourage educators to give the gentle nudge to a deserving student to take a risk and strive to challenge themselves by taking a class with a little bit more difficulty to better prepare them for their future. As expressed very clearly on multiple forums to the Board of Education in the last few weeks, the majority of parents in the Nashua School District never received the survey nor received any communication from the board or administration regarding the board's decision around the time it was discussed. With a large percentage of community input missing, making these significant decisions impacting students is against the charter of the BOE. Once again, we request the Board of Education to rescind the recent motion to remove class rank and weighted GPA for the class of 2024, class of 2025, and class of 2026. We also request that the weighted GPA metric stay for future classes as it complements the unweighted GPA and provides students with an academic metric based solely on their individual effort. We also request that parental and community input be solicited regarding class rank for future students. So in summary, I just want to say that, and if GPA, you know, is going to be unweighted, and that's the direction, that has never been investigated. So there needs to be more investigation into the implications of this. We can't assume that it has the same impact as class rank. So I have the copy with some signatures here. I'd like to, I can happily give that to anybody. That's all I have to say.
Was that in the email?
Uh, no, the signatures.
Not the signatures? Okay. I forwarded everybody the one that you sent me because I...
I emailed it myself as well.
Okay. Everyone got it individually? It's like, everyone else needs to hear this, not just me. Just looking it up. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Dottie.
Thank you, Dottie.
Ms. Bishop, did you say you had forwarded it to all of us?
The BOE email.
Oh.
Yes.
I did not get that. I only got the one that she had sent me directly.
Yeah, I forwarded it.
At 12:08 PM this afternoon, it came through, but it did not have the signatures, so I will ask Ms. Kinsella to upload those as well.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening. My name is Wei-Lin. I live at Sixth Cameron Drive. I currently have a senior and a freshman at Nashua South. I have been closely following the issue regarding removing class rank and weighted GPA as it will directly impact my daughter's high school experience and her college application. I've attended both the September BOE meeting and also the Nashua High Schools info session regarding the subject, and I'm grateful for the BOE member and both principals' explanation on this issue and the rationale behind their... the rationale behind their decision. Although it would have been much better if this communication happened before the May vote. During these meetings, both principal and members of BOE have mentioned that college will evaluate students not purely on GPA, but also the rigor-ness of the courses taken. To me, this is essentially what the weighted GPA tries to convey. Yes, the way college calculate the weighted GPA might be slightly different from Nashua School District, but one would argue that weighted GPA is still a better indicator for the student to evaluate their performance in the eyes of college admission than the unweighted GPAs. I asked the BOE to reconsider the decision of removing weighted GPA. Our kids' future is at your hand. Your decision will affect my daughter's next four years of high school life, as well as many more future students. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the positivity, but if we could not have cheering, that'd be great. Thank you. Looking for Tom Pappas? Is that what this is? And everybody wrote so clearly. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Tom Pappas. I live at 12th Sward Terrace. First of all, I want to say I also attended the information meeting held in this building, and I want to commend the two principals. They did a wonderful job. It was a very active discussion, and they did their best to steer it, and I commend their effort. I think the first parent summed up all the substance very well, so I'm not going to repeat everything that she said. I'd just like to stress one point, and that is whether you do this for current students or whether you do it with a new freshman class. It seems to me that it's more appropriate to do it with a fresh, new class rather than students midstream. I think that the task force itself, who'd studied the issue, recommended starting with a new class, and that seems to me eminently reasonable and appropriate. I think there's problems starting midstream. I think for students who made certain choices, starting midstream might negate the choices they made, and that doesn't seem fair to them. Also, if you start midstream, if you start and take everybody as if they had been under the new system freshman year, it seems to me that's fraught with danger. How are you going to mix the two? And if you try to mix the two, I think that's even more dangerous because you're going to have partly a weighted average and partly not weighted average, and it seems to me that could lead to lots of confusion, certainly among the students as well as colleges looking at this. So I don't urge you to adopt the system, but I do urge you that if you do change the system, that you not do so for students currently enrolled in school and that you do it for a fresh class who can start with a new system and do their entire four years under a new system that they understand and came into, and not do it for students who are either sophomores or juniors now, or freshmen sophomores or juniors now, because it seems to me that would not be appropriate and certainly against the recommendation of the task force that obviously spent time looking at this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Viral Gandhi?
Viral Gandhi, address is 56 Diamondback Avenue in Nashua. I'm not a parent of a high schooler. I have a middle schooler and an elementary school student. So at the outset, on behalf of several middle school, elementary school families that probably so far haven't had a real voice here, I'd like to voice our concerns in regard to these changes that are proposed to the weighted GPA system. I have a slightly different take, and I'll try to articulate that. As a parent of a middle schooler, I'd like to stress that it is important for the board to take a more holistic look at these concerns, the reported issues, both sides, without confining this to the high school part of a student's academic journey. We just went through the portrait of a learner, right? So it has to be more holistic, and I'll explain why. Academic institutions such as our high schools should be looking at encouraging, incentivizing students to push the envelope, raise the bar in every field, not just academics. And we do that today. The high school, after all, is the training ground for college and life beyond. Speaking of a student's journey, academic or otherwise, ranking and weighted approaches, these are common from the early years. It's just not called weighted GPA. Our own elementary and middle schools offer the students a wide variety of programs to explore, to express, and to excel. I'll name a few: Continental Math, Math Olympiad, First Lego League, both the Explorer and the Challenge, FTC, Spelling Bee, Destination Imagination, Cross Country, all the sports. Several come to mind. What is important to note is that several of these are actually competitive. We are talking about young kids here, right? Elementary-level kids. And the top achievers get distinctively better recognition for the quality of their effort and their performance. Why is it different in high school? For example, I know this because my son won the Spelling Bee two years in a row. Only the first-place student, remember, this is a rank now, only the first-place student from each school makes it to the state Spelling Bee competition. This is by design. So this is by design, and it should be promoted, not discouraged. There's nothing wrong with that. The intent here isn't about undermining anyone's effort or abilities, but the goal here is to incentivize high-quality effort, innovation, First Lego League, teamwork, right? And achievement. And we all know, we are professionals here across all professions. No matter what your profession is, the high achievers are recognized better and fast-tracked for leadership roles and recognized for going the extra mile. Take sports. Every aspiring athlete works hard. It's not about that effort, but the reward is for the outcome, for the performance. So the recognition and reward is weighted by the quality and impact of their performance. Corporate America looks to recognize every employee that meets expectations. That's good, but it does make sure that those who exceed expectations get rewarded distinctively better than the rest of the group. Performance matters. Rigor matters. Quality matters. The proposed changes to the weighted GPA system would constrain a student's motivation to push the envelope. A more objective approach would help us design solutions that would address the root issues and concerns in ways that are constructive. For example, have you thought about enhanced counseling for these students who feel the pressure, who feel the stress? Just doing away with weighted GPA or class rank is, in my opinion, not the solution. So, you know, enhance counseling support and career guidance for the students that do feel stressed and pushed while still preserving the incentives for the students who are interested in taking on challenging assignments. We should encourage that. So middle schoolers have been prepping hard to get ready for the challenging, yet rewarding academic profile that is on offer with the Nashua High Schools. The proposed changes will fundamentally dilute this academic profile and force families like mine to revisit, to revisit our plans for high school. In closing, I respectfully implore the board to revisit the current recommendations, keeping the root cause. What is, what is the concern of the students who feel stressed and pushed? Is it the weighted GPA, or it's something else? The environment that they live in? Specifically, I request the board to preserve the weighted GPA system, not only for the current high school students, but also for the generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Falguni Vashi?
My name is Falguni Vashi. I live on 6th Evelyn Circle in Nashua. Respected board members, school administration, fellow parents, and students. I am here as a very confused as well as frustrated parent. I have a freshman in high school at South, and I have two children in elementary school. I'm talking on behalf of my husband, so if I'm saying "we," that's what I mean, and if any other parents, all the freshman parents, I guess. We found out about the decision to remove the rank and the weighted GPA back in September. This came as a shock to us, and since then, we have been doing more research on this matter and attending the Board of Education meetings to understand the situation more and to express our concerns. We attended the information night at Nashua High School South earlier in the year for our eighth grader, and we also attended the open house before school started. And I want to mention that there was no mention of the removal of the weighted GPA and the rank in either of the meetings. And I do understand that when we met in March, this decision was not made. However, in September, when we had the open house, this was not conveyed to us in any of the meetings that we had. My daughter, me, and my husband don't think that this is fair to us. This information was crucial and is crucial for an incoming freshman and their parents, and we felt that the district did not communicate this to us. We also attended the October meeting at Nashua High School South, which was led by the two principals, which I really appreciate both of you taking the time to explain the task force findings to us.
Oh, I'm sorry. When you turn, the microphone doesn't pick up your words, and then it doesn't go on the tape, so people watching later won't be able to hear it. Sorry.
I really appreciate the time that the two principals took to explain the task force findings to us because a lot of parents were not aware of that. It was a very interactive meeting, and it was very informative and emotional for a lot of parents. So we're very grateful for that. From what we understood, and most of my fellow parents will agree with us, I have three things to say. Firstly, most parents didn't, didn't not get the surveys sent out by the task force. Of all the parents in the audience for that particular day meeting, only two parents received the surveys, and I want to emphasize the fact that those two parents were educators in the Nashua School District. We have gotten a lot of surveys from the school district. We get emails from the school district, and I find it very hard to believe that such an important survey was not sent out to parents, let alone high school parents. The entire district, regardless of the grade, should have gotten the survey. We believe that a survey that would lead to a decision such big, which would have a significant impact on our children's future, should have been sent to all the district parents. Secondly, from what I gather, the survey questions were focused on the rank and not the weighted GPA. And we know this because some of the questions were presented in the October 19 meeting, otherwise we would not even have known what the questions were. So again, I thank both the principals. The results of the survey were automatically applied to the weighted GPA, which again is not fair to the students of the Nashua School District. I find it very hard, as an educated woman, to understand how the survey results, which are objective for one particular metric, can be applied to the other metric. Thirdly, as I mentioned earlier, there was no mention of this to high school parents and definitely not to parents of incoming freshmen, which again is a communication issue from the district. As parents, we are also concerned that if the weighted GPA is removed, then there is less of a motivation for the students to take higher-level courses, which in turn may reduce the enrollment for the higher-level courses. And we fear that by the time my elementary school children are in high school, these higher-level courses will not be offered in the district. This has a significant impact on the lowering the education standard of the Nashua School District. Lastly, a student should be given credit regardless of which area they're excelling in, whether it be sports, arts, academics, whatever that might be. And then there are some students who are at average or above average in all the above matters, and there is nothing wrong with that. Yes, most colleges will recalculate the weighted GPA. But my question to the task force and to the others involved in this process is, where a college or a university has 80,000 applicants, do they really recalculate the GPA for each student, or do they go through the applicant's transcripts and sort them based on what is on the transcript? We don't know the answer to this question, or I have not been able to find the answer to this question. If there is even a remote possibility of the GPA that is written on the transcript being used to sort the applicants for their college applications, our children in the Nashua School District deserve to have the weighted GPA on the transcript. Just like students who are athletes get credit for their excellence in sports, academically-focused students should be allowed to have their weighted GPA on the transcript. Another thing I learned at the meeting on October 19 is that the weighted GPA is on the transcript and is only visible to the student, parent, teachers, and counselors. So why not leave it there for the colleges to look at? And if the colleges, universities recalculate the GPA, then that'd be it. It's just a metric that we, the district, can use. I'm really hoping that the district will reconsider rescinding the decision to remove the weighted GPA for all the current and future Nashua School District students. I respectfully request the board to rescind the motion and help our children get better education and excel in academics. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. Thank you. So we have, we have two more people signed up on the list. However, we are past our 15-minute mark. I apologize, I lost track of time. I would be looking for a motion to extend public comment. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. All in favor of extending public comment for the last two, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Can Nikhil Shokan come up? Did I say that right?
Hello, my name's Nikhil Shokin. I'm a current freshman at 106 Cherrywood Drive.
Oh, oh, sorry. Whoever does the notes, please strike that. We don't use any addresses for students.
Okay.
You get, you get privacy.
Done.
Thank you.
I'm here to inform you about the weighted GPA and my stance on that. So first of all, I've done a little research, and I found out that from Crimson College Counseling and other counselors, they said that Ivy Leagues and other colleges will not recalculate weighted GPAs because it takes a lot of their time. And I feel like if we're at this disadvantage of not having the weighted GPA, then our peers in the future of this century will not be able to get into many colleges. Also, as a freshman, when we were signing up for classes, we were not informed that the weighted GPA is gone. So a lot of my peers took the opportunities to take higher AP classes as we were allowed to take one. But now we might be regretting that, as if the weighted GPA isn't there, our grades could be down. And this is why I think the weighted GPA should be opposed.
Thank you so much. Can Jay Parikam come up?
Hi, my name is Jay Parik.
Parik, sorry.
It's okay. You butchered it way less than what I've heard all around the world. My name is Jay Parik. I live at 68 Cherrywood Drive. I have a junior in high school. I'm not going to repeat all the things- I'm not going to repeat all the things, it was a heated discussion in the October meeting, but I do have a few questions. Every single person, including the principals, and I've heard you guys talk in several meetings, is Nashua Board of Education and the school district is really poor in communication. What are we doing to fix it going forward? Last meeting, Samai calculated and told us it was 152 days since the thing passed. It's been whatever number of days since, but there was no mention. I have a kid who was going from sophomore to junior, had no idea till one fine day after school started, and she had signed up for three AP classes, that we came to find out that this is what's going on. She would have taken those classes anyway, but still, what are we going to do to address the communication issues? The other thing that I wrote down was, we talk about surveys. I get surveys for the school that's being built at the end of my street. What should it be named? Oh, if you haven't responded, here's a reminder, do it again. But when it comes to critical things, as you guys heard, we didn't get anything. The other thing that I've heard is Samai, who's a school representative, his hands are tied in how he can communicate to rest of his fellow students about what happens in the meeting. Maybe there should be some consideration or give him a means, whether it's him or the next person that comes in, where he can discuss what happened at Board of Education meeting by maybe posting in a Google Classroom or through an administrator at the school, where he can share the information with students, because he doesn't have time to go explain to three years' worth of students. He'll tell it to 15, 20 of his close friends or people he hangs out with. Tools should be given to these two kids to communicate with their fellow students on what happened in Board of Education meeting. Maybe it's a short blurb in the school newspaper, like this year, this week's or this month's Panther print. One of the students explained very eloquently their opinion on weighted GPA and ranking. So tools should be given to the kids. And then, since September, I've spent countless of late night hours to try and find another school district who implemented this type of a change in the middle of a group of students taking classes in high school. Probably 20 hours of Google and Yahoo and DuckDuckGo searches have yielded nothing for me. So unless we are trying to be pioneers in disturbing students, we should reconsider. And the other piece, what are we going to do to make whatever comes out, that implementation to be better than what it has been? In October meeting, I asked the question, why isn't, or the administration took the time to go forward with the implementation, but they don't have time to update the documentation on the websites to inform people 152, 160, whatever number of days. It took that much. We don't have time to update four pages of documentation that says we don't have weighted GPA and stuff. So next time, I would request, consult the community, do whatever you have to do, get everybody's behind, but communicate, update documentation, and then make the change. So that's all I would request. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and that ends our first public comment period. I'll give that to you to put in the book. That brings us up to, if, if people want to head out, I can take a minute before I, okay. I will hand the floor over to Dr. Andre.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, I want to say.
Mike, is your mic on?
Sorry.
Sorry.
I'm not used to hitting the button. It was a great night last week at the Nashua Education Foundation, the Nefis. I was honored to present the Ron Kraus Outside the Education Award to the United Way of Greater Nashua. The United Way pivoted dramatically at the onset of the pandemic to make sure our students had the resources they needed. The United Way volunteers supported breakfast and lunch distribution at the lunch at schools and in the neighborhoods. They also stocked the school supply pantry for staff to pick up school supplies. They distributed Chromebooks to students in needs. They distributed laptops for teachers in needs, teachers in need. The United Way recruited volunteer tutors during the summer and during the school year for tutoring services. And they also offered Wi-Fi hotspots for students in need with no access to the internet. We are extremely grateful for their service. Also at the Nefis, we honored 13 members of our staff with the 2002 Excellence in Education Award. So once again, congratulations to Emily Crusell from Fairgrounds Elementary School, Maureen Curran from Nashua High North, Sarah Sauners from Panachak Middle School, Megan Doddin from Charlotte Avenue Elementary School, Jean Marie Eckstein from Charlotte Avenue Elementary School, Roberta Flanagan from Fairgrounds Middle School, James Guy from Nashua High South-North, Sherri Grattan from New Searls Elementary School, Anastasia Lopez from Elm Street Middle School, Kristen Mayart from Nashua High School North, Nate Mazarelli from Nashua High School South, Diane Marchant from Pleasant Elementary School, and Julie Oliver from Birch Hill Elementary School. So congratulations to all our educators, as well as our great partners with the Nashua Ed Foundation. So, and, please. So congratulations to all our student athletes this fall. We had 642 high school participants this fall, which is up from 589 last year. We also had approximately 260 middle school students participate as well. Several teams are still competing. Congratulations to the Fairgrounds Middle School Boys Soccer Team for winning the Tri-County Division Two Championship on Friday, capping off an undefeated 8-0-1 season. North Football Team won the West Conference with an undefeated season, earning a bye in the first round, and expected to go deep into the playoffs. North will host the winner of Wyndham, of the Wyndham-Betford game in the quarterfinal the weekend of November 11th, 11-12. Just FYI, Dottie's son might be involved with that team?
Son-in-law.
Son-in-law, right? As a football coach. South Boys Soccer finished third in the division and is playing in the semifinals against Manchester Central tomorrow. Good luck to the Panthers. North and South cheer teams will compete in the state championship on Sunday. Best of luck to them. Go blue, go purple. We have an upcoming professional day next week on Election Day. Our facilitators are working to prepare a great session for their fellow faculty and staff next Tuesday, when our students are, will not be in school because of the nine schools that serve as the polling locations, and teachers gather for a day of professional development. There are two professional learning objectives for November 8th. The first is to explore the ways for our Tier One universal instruction that can be improved for both English language learners, multilingual learners, and our academic language learners. The second is for teachers to work in teams and set at least one goal to support students as they advance equity, access and opportunities for all learners in their classrooms. It is a lot to consider throughout the day, but it's important for us as educators to collectively learn and to discuss about student achievement. And then, the City of Nashua Veterans Day Parade smartly steps off from Holman Stadium at 11:11 next Friday on the 11th. The parade moves from there down to Main Street to Elm Street Middle School. Secondary school marching bands will be participating in the Veterans Day Parade, where we are proud to join them in honoring our veterans for their dedicated service. Thank you to all of our veterans and our, and all of our soldiers currently serving here and abroad, and thank you to their families as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Board member response to superintendent comments. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I'd like to say congratulations to all our teachers for the awards. I just want to bring up one point that you made about the athletes with the competition. That's exactly what the parents were saying tonight about the weighted GPA. So if we can compete in athletics, we can compete in academics. Thank you.
Ms. Brown? Ms. Lambier?
I was able to attend the Nefis as well, and it was really exciting to see all the teachers get recognized for their hard work over the years. And I think it's really, it's really cool that they were nominated by other teachers as well, so you know that it was like a collegial atmosphere, the teachers supporting each other. And it was nice also to see Dr. Andre there, supporting all the teachers as well. So, thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Arling?
No comment.
Ms. Raymond?
Just a congratulations to all of the teachers and all of our sports teams. And Mr. Zebolos, this is his first year, I think, coaching this team, and he's done a remarkable job, and all the boys are working hard as well. And just to invite everyone to come to the Veterans Day Parade. It's really lovely. We have one, two, three, five marching bands, plus the veterans and all the other things, and it's always a good time, so.
Mr. Claffey? Ms. Oden?
I just want to say congratulations to all those teachers who were recognized at the Nefis.
Thank you. We are now up to student member of the board comments. Did you guys draw straws? Psychopathy.
Okay, so I'll go first. You know, winter sports registration is finally open, and for North seniors, baby pictures are due for the yearbook at midnight tonight, so turn those in. But for the real stuff, I do agree, finding effective ways that the student representatives, or Samai and I can communicate what happens at the meetings, and in a way that is effective is important, and that we keep it a continued practice moving forward. And as far as GPA goes, Class Rank does a disservice to the learning community and makes education a competition when it should be developing your personal interests and career development. If anything, I think reinstating weighted GPA could be a good compromise, as it is personal, even though the colleges do recalculate. And for the Ivies and competitive schools that don't, they still contextualize this course rigor, along with the reputation of the school. And since the admissions counselors are usually familiar with the schools that they accept students from, and if not, the, sorry, what's the word? The guidance counselor provides a school profile that will include that context that's needed.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Mr. Samai? Sahu?
Thank you for that. So I just want to start off by saying, congrats to Mr. Guy and Mr. Mazarell, making South proud. In addition, big congrats to our South varsity soccer team. Last year, they went on undefeated season to state championship win. Let's hope we can get another one. In addition, let's see, in next week, we're going to be selling, the seniors and juniors are going to be selling Panther Bowl tickets in the cafeteria next Wednesday and Thursday, and those are $5. And senior superlatives are due on Google Classroom on November 18th. They just came out. In addition, over the past week or so, our school has conducted our elections for various officer positions and our, as well as the Board of Education election. So I just want to congratulate Dante Costellano, because he's going to be my successor in a few months, and I'm really excited. He's a great kid, and I think you guys are going to love him. In addition, just congrats to Armani and I, because we also won our respective elections. So you might be done with us in a few months, but you'll see us later. You'll see us in the spring. And I think on Class Rank and weighted GPA, I'll talk about that later, I guess, when necessary, but a lot of things, I guess.
Thank you.
Can I say one quick thing?
Did you win president?
I did.
Is that what I heard? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can I ask Mr. Sahu?
I ran for secretary. I have enough on my plate. I feel so bad because I forgot to say this, but congratulations to Warren Farley. He's going to be the North student representative. He's a great kid, so yeah.
Heard that, yes. The crew I knew down here was excited that he was going to be on. He's nice. I'm supposed to say hi to him, I guess. All right, guys, well, thank you so much. And we're back into the boring stuff. No committee on budget, but I will turn the floor over to Ms. Johnson for the Committee on Finance and Operations.
Thank you. On the first approval, I'm going to ask one of my board members on the committee to make the motion, because I voted against it to send it to, even though to send it to the full board.
Okay.
We'd like to make a recommendation to approve the increase in drivers' education student tuition and pay rate for the instructors as of January 1st, 2023.
Now, second?
And I'd like to speak on that, please.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. The reason why I voted against, I don't have a problem giving the raises, but I just think in this economic time, when inflation is so high, to raise the amount on drivers' ed from $550 to $650, I think it's a lot of asking parents right now, when the cost of fuel, heating our homes and food has gone up so much, that $100 is a lot to ask of people at this point in time. It should have been done maybe last year when we had a better economy, or two years ago when gas prices were low. But right now, when we're seeing everything escalating, I just cannot consciously ask parents to pay more. Thank you.
The driver's ed is a lottery system for the high schools, right? Right?
Yes, it typically is. We run five, they try to run five sessions. And just the, the reason for the increase, it's still going to be cheaper than any of the other programs.
I just dropped $750.
Yep, and you can spend up to $950.
Yeah.
But the key is, we've had a number of people running this program for a long time. They're moving on. We need more driving instructors. If we don't get the instructors, then we can't run the programs, right? So that's, that's what's driving this, is we want to pay the drivers more, if you're going to, driving instructors more, if you want to pay them more, you got to charge more. So that's the...
Okay. Ms. Raymond?
Thanks. So this is a program where the funding of the tuition directly funds, like, you know, like lunch, where the lunch money funds the lunch budget. Is this a program where they derive the funds to pay the teachers directly from the tuition?
Yeah, this is a special revenue fund, so the tuition paid by the students pays for all the costs of running the program, as well as some profit, which is then turned into purchasing new cars. So it's a fully self...
Self-contained.
And my second question is, so it's a Lotto, so all students who want to take it, sign up for it, and then sucked out of a hat or whatever, and those are the, the kids who get it. Is there already a, a system in place for students who get free and reduced lunch, for example, to get a discounted rate?
No.
No? Okay.
I'd like to say something else again. And again, students who do get free and reduced lunch don't get the discounted rate on this. The cost of everything has gone up so astronomically. I understand what the cost is outside the school, but we have the right, and we have the ways to control the cost here. You know, maybe next year, it might be better, but I'm looking at the families who cannot afford this. And this is you're asking $100 more, and $100 today is a lot of money on some families. And I think it's a lot of money on everybody who's not getting a 10% cost of living increase. They're all living within our, the same amount of money that we've gotten before, because there's no cost of living increase out there. So.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Sorry. So if, if we were not to approve the $100 per pupil tuition increase, does that also follow that there would not be an instructor pay increase? Like, is it possible to increase the pay to attract staff this year without raising the tuition?
I would say it's possible, but it was suggested by the people that have been running the program for a long time, that if you're looking for instructors, then you should, this is actually less than they originally asked.
For pay increase or for tuition increase, or both?
Pay increase.
Okay.
So I said, can we start at, at this level, which is a $5 increase?
Right. I'm just wondering if the two... I'm just wondering if the two issues can be separated.
Ms. Brown?
I think part of the reason for increasing the cost of the program was not only to hopefully attract more drivers and instructors, so that we can expand the program to more students, but also to, and still keep the rates competitive to other private organizations, but also because we put some of that money into the special revenue funds to pay for vehicles as they wear out. So I think that is an advantage that we are looking forward, because I think, I think it's like a 10-year cycle that we generally replace the vehicles for the driver's ed program, something like that?
Approximately.
Approximately, depending on the number of miles and that kind of thing. So that's the other reason that we need to keep the pay, that we were angling towards that. But I do understand what Ms. Johnson's point, it is a difficult time right now.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. All those in favor of approving the increase in driver's education student tuition and pay increase for the instructors, instructors as of January 1st, 2023, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Floor goes back to you.
Thank you. I move to approve the purchase of 66 computers for CTE programs at a cost of $75,870 from IT Insiders, funding from Perkins Grant.
Second? Thank you, Ms. Lamphier. Discussion, questions on the computers? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move to approve the prepayment of the final installment to the Grace Fellowship Church of $700,000, $600,000 to come from deferred maintenance escrow, and $100,000 to be transferred from the OOD tuition operating budget.
Second? Thank you, Ms. Brown. Any comments or questions on this?
Just, if you could tell us a little bit more about why a church is getting $700,000?
They own the building.
So...
This is, this is transferring the last payment of the purchase of Franklin Street?
Yes.
Exactly. We, it's a four-year, what we're doing is we're saving $25,000 by paying it in November instead of waiting until next September. We're going to take that $25,000 in savings, and we're going to use it to pave the parking lots, because they're in a, you wouldn't want to park there.
And this isn't, it's church-owned parking that we get to use during the week, which is why the city isn't paving it, right?
Correct. We have an easement as long as we...
Right.
I think it's a 33-year easement or something, but...
That's what it said. So the question of the payment is, the payment is going to be made either now or later, right?
We pay now, you pay $700, and we use 25, and we'll put in another 20 or so to fix the lots, or we wait, the lots will stay in poor shape, and we'll pay 725 in September of 2023.
All right. Okay. Any other comments or questions?
This is a deal.
It is a deal. Okay, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have to give Mr. Donovan credit for negotiating that deal, though.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Recommendation to accept the control technologies proposal in the amount of $26,714 to decommission the old Siemens control and install a new N4 control system. Funds to come from deferred maintenance.
Second? Thank you, Ms. Brown. Mr. Donovan, can you speak to this a little bit? Sorry.
Well, this is the, part of the HVAC system upgrade, we need to, the controls at some point in time become obsolete, so we're switching to this new control, and that allows us to control the HVAC events from one single location. So it's got a software component, as well as the hardware piece.
Cool. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move to approve the FY '23 grants from the federal government.
Second? Thank you, Ms. Lamphier. Do you want to just give a little blurb on this, too?
Sure. Typically, we discuss the grants as part of the budget process, but since the grants are in a different cycle than the operating budget, we've decided, based on some discussions with the city, to inform the board each year of the, of the grants, because typically the grants run from September or October through. That calendar year is opposed. So when you're approving the operating budget in the spring, you're talking about the grants that are almost done. This is, now that we have the information, these are the grants that we'll be spending this next school year.
And this is just kind of going to be a new way that we're going to be approving grants as...
Exactly. This will be...
Creating a new procedure.
So the grants that we get every year, the Title I, Title II grants, that sort of, if there's any grants outside of the normal ones, we'll still bring those forward to the board.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move to approve the September 2023 budget transfers.
Second? Ms. Brown? I think these are self-explanatory.
Yeah.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And that concludes all my business.
Thank you. You guys had a busy meeting. That was a lot of information to go through. Ms. Brown, I'll give the floor to you for the Committee on Curriculum and Evaluation.
Are we skipping the policy?
Brief update, my father passed away last week, and so I had to cancel policy.
I would like to make a comment on that.
No. I don't think that's appropriate. I've heard enough. I'm going to step out.
I would like to address the fact that we have a tendency on this board to keep communication that only goes on between the president and the clerk, and we had a situation last week where a meeting was canceled at the very last minute, without actually seeing, in an emergency situation, where the rest of the committee, we didn't see if someone else could step in and fill the roles, which is typically how we do that. So I would like to ask if there is a policy and procedure in place when a committee member is unavailable to make it, whether it is the chair of that committee, if the chair of the committee is not available, how do we pass the duties on to the next? For example, earlier this evening, Ms. Gilio was unable to make it to HR, so Ms. Oden was able to fill that spot for her. And that's typically how it's been done on the rest of this, through all the other meetings that we've ever had through this board, is if you're not unable to fill the role, you check for the alternate. That's actually the reason that we have three committee members plus an alternate. And then, in an emergency situation, even the president can step in and fill that role. We have had an ongoing issue where there has been exclusive communication between Ms. Raymond and Ms. Bishop, that's excluded other committee members from not just this issue, but other, other issues on the board. And last week, it was actually even implied that typically, another committee member who would have been Ms. Johnson, or who was the alternate on that committee, I think it's Ms...
Ms. Darling's on the committee.
Ms. Darling's on the committee. They weren't consulted before the thing was canceled. And then it was implied from the district that Ms. Raymond's absence made the items on the agenda invaluable. There are also three items on that agenda, specifically, one was impacting a policy on public comment, restraints and seclusion, and manifestation of hardship. Those are some serious issues that I think the community should have been able to weigh in on, if necessary, but at least hear about in great detail. The other point that I think was not acceptable was that we didn't actually get that agenda, that those kind of heavy-duty policies were going to be out until Friday night. It was implied that Ms. Raymond gets, she does a lot of work, and so that's why her efforts in the committee were indispensable. However, if we only get the information on Friday night to what's going to be on the committee meeting for the following Tuesday, is it fair to the rest of those committee members, for the work that they've done through the weekend, to then have it canceled at the last minute, without taking into consideration, at least communicating it with them to go through it? So I guess my question is, what's our policy on when something hap, when there's a cancellation? Do we just move it down to the next committee member? Or do we just keep it within the board president and the committee chair to make the decision whether the committee is going to be canceled or not?
Ms. Lamphier?
I just wanted to bring up the fact that I volunteered to work at the polls, and there were actually a finance committee meeting scheduled for both the primaries and the election next week. And I knew that I couldn't do both, so I contacted Ms. Cancela and asked her, and I also contacted Paula Johnson, as the chair of the committee, and asked if we could move, if we could change those dates. And it wasn't, you know, I didn't receive any, you know, there was no question about it. They agreed to change it for me, so I could do the polls, and I really appreciated it. And I think that we should grant our fellow board members a little bit of grace for circumstances that are beyond our control. When I first volunteered at the polls, I had stepped back from the finance committees, so I was only in the role of an alternate at that time. But then I got my position back, and, you know, I had this situation, and the people that were on the committee, and they were willing to work with me. So I just wanted to point that out. Thanks.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I try to schedule whatever I can, and I mean, mine was a little bit out, you know, distance, so it was easy enough to change. I, I'm not going to fault anybody if they have a death in the family. I mean, that's unfortunate. There's nothing you can do about it. I feel very, you know, I made a comment to Ms. Cancela, she came back, I sent an email to Ms. Raymond, I was sorry, if there's anything I could do. Okay. I would have been more than happy to step in like I did the last time for her, you know, and I think that what we need to do is, we need to maybe have a policy, do we have a policy that if the chair can't, is unable, that one of us can then step in? Because I remember one, one night, I couldn't make policy, because I was sick, I believe, and then Ms. Darling had a situation. You stepped in, but then when you, I asked that everything, please be sent back to policy, because not everybody was there to vote on it, because the members of the committee. So I think there's circumstances that are beyond our control sometimes, and that's all I want to say.
And I was reached out to fill in. I had plans that night and couldn't make it, and spoke with Ms. Cancela and with Ms. Raymond, who said that nothing that was being presented was, was necessarily needing to be done that night, that it could be pushed out for two weeks. I have a really hard time with, with listening to this, because on October 28th, Ms. Gilio reached out to you, as the alternate, to chair the HR committee, and you didn't respond to that till 20 minutes before this meeting. So I think to expect people who are going through a period of bereavement to be held up to a higher standard than you is unprofessional, and I think it's mean. So I can look into if there is a policy, I don't think there is, in rescheduling, but it's disgraceful what you just did to Ms. Raymond. And I don't care if you're going to smirk and say it's because we're friends. If somebody had did this to you, I would also be coming back on them and saying, give Jess some grace. It's absolutely ridiculous.
Ms. Oden?
Yeah, as somebody who has served on the board, will be 13, well, I served on the board 12 years, I've been, I was off the board for seven months and just came back on in August. But the policy committee is very different from other committees. The chair, all of my years' experience, the chair of the policy committee sits down with administration and goes over the policies, which doesn't happen in any other committee. So I would, it made sense, all the policies were up to date, they were reviewing. So I just think, under the circumstances, somebody's, somebody who lost their father, I, I, I think, I, I understand it, and I think there's good reason why the person did, did ask to cancel the meeting, so.
Mr. Claffey?
I was hoping, would I be able to make a motion to recess for 10 minutes?
Yes.
Out of concern for one of our members.
I think she's left, yes.
Well, I'd like to...
I think a recess is fine.
10 minutes?
Yep. We're in a recess for 10 minutes. I'm going to, I'm going to start the meeting back up whenever Jimmy's ready. Okay, Jimmy's ready, so we are back in. The floor goes back to, guys, I'm starting the meeting again, sorry. Okay, so let's, let's continue on with the business of the district. Ms. Brown, curriculum and evaluation.
All right, we met on October 24th, 2022. I move to approve the purchase of the Whole Phonics decodable readers in the amount of $104,930. Funding will be coming from the operating budget.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. All those in favor, any comments or questions?
I have a comment.
Yep.
I just want to say thank you, that we're bringing Phonics finally back into the classroom. Yes, yes! Mr. Markku, we agree on this, yay! Because I fought for this for so long, since 2000, and I'm so glad, because we're going to give every child a chance to learn how to read in this district, so they won't be three or four years behind in reading. They will be able to move up with their class and hopefully have a weighted GPA. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, moving on.
All right. I'd also like to recognize the teachers that came and gave an excellent presentation. It was very informative, and they did a fantastic job. Next, I'd like to move to approve the Playworks proposal in the amount of $15,150, funds to come from Title I funding.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I'd like to move to approve the Hockman Method training proposal in the amount of $22,000, funding to come from Title II and ESSER funds.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Committee on Human Resources, Ms. Oden chaired tonight, thank you.
Move to approve the personnel recommendations of this evening.
I think we have to waive the, the rules first.
Oh, waive the rules to report a meeting from earlier this evening.
Second?
Thank you, Ms. Brown. All those in favor to suspend the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Move to approve the personnel recommendations made earlier this evening.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Claffey with the liaison report for JSSBC. Thank you.
Would I be able to present, is there any opposition to moving that to down the list and move, and hear about the GPA presentation, if that's okay?
Yeah, that's, I don't have any...
Anybody have a problem with that?
Objection for that? Okay. So going into unfinished business, I will hand the floor over to Dr. Andre.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So first of all, I'd like to thank the audience members who are still here and for engaging in this discussion. So for people who have come to know me over... So for people who have come to know me over the last three months, I'd like a healthy debate and discourse on how we move the district forward. And I think this is a great opportunity to rethink the way that we're doing business. So obviously, we heard a lot of matters that came up over, not only in May, but also the last board meeting and the parent comments today. And I was taking a lot of notes on, when the parents were speaking today. And when I look at this issue, we're talking about weighted GPA and class rank, and I, I wonder if we're asking the right question. And there was, I think it was the second or third gentleman who spoke is, what's the root cause? What are we trying to get at? What are we trying to solve? And sometimes I think we're having this conversation, and we're just moving chairs around on a, on the deck and really not getting to the deeper level questioning. So I think this is really a great opportunity for deeper kind of conversations to address things. And I heard a great term when I was speaking to somebody else in the, in the community, this is an evolution. Where are we, you know, where were we in 2014 and 2015 when we started the competency-based education? Where were we in 2018? Where's the conversation we're having tonight, November 1st in 2022? And where do we need to be in 2024? And again, I think these are the conversations on how are we evolving? And we had a great presentation from our high school administration and director of guidance today on a portrait of a learner. And when I listened to that presentation, I didn't hear anything about class rank and GPAs. But we're talking about what does deeper learning and academic excellence mean? And so how do these two conversations relate? Do they conflate? Are they conflicting? And so we need to have the conversations on, and when I first came into the district, what is our mental model of success? What does it look like? And dependent on the audience, we might have different conversations and different answers. And so we need to come together on, what is our portrait of a learner? What does academic excellence really mean? And what does deeper learning and engagement look like in the classroom? Where is the intrinsic and extrinsic motivation? What I'm hearing a lot is a lot about extrinsic motivation for our students. But where is the joy of learning? Where is the curiosity? Where is their, their, their intellectual, intellectual understanding? And we talk about taking a risk. Where do they want to go without that fear of a weighted GPA or a class rank behind it? That's what pre-K through 12 schools should be, a safe learning environment to explore your beliefs and passions. So I ask ourselves, even coming in, what's our shared beliefs? What do we believe in Nashua that, what do we have to do to support all of our students? And again, that's an evolution of our conversations. And so this is a real, again, a good opportunity to really rethink the ways that we're doing. And tonight, we have two issues. And again, the administration's heard me talk about this. We have a technical issue and we have an adaptive issue. We can create a policy tonight saying, with one motion, we will adopt a unweighted GPA system, or we're going to eliminate class rank. We can do that easily. That's a technical challenge. We can make a vote, get the majority, go forward. The bigger issue is around our adaptive challenge, which is harder. What does deeper learning and academics look like for all students? That takes a little more time, and it's a little more complex than a single vote. As we heard from the parents today, how do we transition in there? We can say it could be the incoming eighth grade class coming in, but that doesn't solve what does academic excellence look like in our classrooms? What does student engagement, student intrinsic motivation look like? Students exploring our college pathways, our career pathways, career goals? Those are the adaptive challenges. What does proficiency in a portrait of a learner truly look like in the classroom? That's a harder, complex issue. So we can vote tonight and say, we're doing X, Y, and Z, but this is an evolution of conversation of where does the Nashua School Districts pre-K through 12 and the community, what does our schools look like in 22 years, like 22, 23, 24, for our incoming eighth graders or even our incoming pre-K students? How do we shape this conversation? So to me, this is exciting. This is what we actually should be doing as a board of education, as an administration, as a community, to engage in this conversation, where are we going? So I am very happy, and you can see me getting excited about this, that these are the important conversations we have, and they're hard. They're not easy. I mean, I just, I loved being in the hallway, just in the recent, going back and forth, like, where are we going? So, so we need to talk about academic excellence and deeper learning. Mr. Poska? So here, how do we measure success? And this is where we have to start changing our mental model. Everybody's a genius, but if we only judge a fish by its ability to climb a tree, it will spend its whole life believing it's stupid. And I look at the GPA system, and right now, we only, we only recognize success one way. And I don't know if that's fair to all students. It might be fair to some students, but is that the system we want to create? And so again, through this conversation, we need to think about, how do we measure success? And so that's the evolution of this conversation, because we have some students who are excelling in the arts, in CTE pathways in the community, that might not be reflected in these current So we'll get into it in a conversation, but this is our going in, this is our system. We have a four-level system, and we talked, there was a, a parent who mentioned earlier, effort should be recognized. So I could be, and we can use a sports analogy, I can be the size of Shaquille O'Neal. I'm 7'2" and I play basketball. And he's excelling. He doesn't have to try that hard to dunk a basketball. I could be Mario Andrade, who's 5'8", 5'9", and trying to dunk a basketball. Man, I'm kind of shrinking. It's good, I have to put in a lot of effort. I'm not going to dunk a basketball. Should I be not recognized for my effort because I'm in the wrong pathway? So there's some students who are putting in a lot of effort, in the way that we're ranking, they won't be recognized on how hard they're trying in, in their classes by the system we created. And so those are the conversations that we need to have, is that you could be trying really hard in media, like medium in an AP class, and you could be a C student, and there's someone busting their hump in, in extensions class, and the GPA is the same. So sometimes it's not all about effort or rigor. If we unpack what an 11th grade standard looks like, there's no levels in our 11th grade standards, in our Common Core state standards. It's one standard of what proficiency looks like and with, with those extensions. So again, we need to have those conversations on how we recognize success. And right now, this way, students are in different levels that are kind of random, and not recognizing excellence in different ways. So in here, as we kind of move forward, and we talked about just recalculating, so in the current systems, and this is a letter from one of our higher ed partners to one of our students, and I just took the name out, but this is a letter to Ms. Hackett. And you could see that our higher ed partners are already asking just to recalculate. So the student won a $10,000 award, the higher ed partner just says, can you just dump their grades in here? We're going to recalculate it on our own. They're not looking for the weighted GPA from, from Nashua. So that's kind of what our guidance councils receive frequently. Next, and we talked about students not being motivated if there's no weight or associated. So our high school administration looked at our top 10, top 10 in the graduating class last year. So those students took 81 classes that did not count, and we're going to talk about that in a second too, towards their GPA, and this was their intrinsic motivation. 15 students got an A+, 63 students received an A, three students got an A-. So when we talk about students aren't going to try hard in those classes, they're still trying hard in those classes. They have that intrinsic motivation, and their weight wasn't necessarily a factor. These are two students that, different kind of profile. So student A has a 4.98 GPA. And if you look at their transcript, straight A's and one B+. And you can see the classes that they take, freshman writing, Algebra I, AP classes, so on and so forth. This student, again, really nice transcript, 4.98. Student B has a GPA of 5.0. So with class rank, this student's going to be ranked higher, their GPA is higher, but their transcript looks a little different. There's a couple Cs in there, there's a D in there. So I don't know the profile, but if we're looking at just straight numbers, student A looks different from student B. And there's a reason for some of that. Let me just go back to the other one, Matt, for a second. And so as I said earlier, we have a four-tiered system, but in that four-tiered system, there's certain things that we don't recognize in our current system. So it's called unleveled classes. So some students received credits, but it doesn't count towards their GPA. So if you take a Principles of Engineering design class, doesn't go into your GPA. Advanced Manufacturing banned. Some biotech and biomed science classes. Business Finance, Coral, Drone Technology, freshman writing, don't count it to your GPA. There's other unleveled classes are, Matt, if you go to the next slide, that we're talking about the next, the real world, yeah. So when we get it to a real, a well-rounded student, and we talk about a portrait of a graduate, what are opportunities that we also look at that might be in and outside of the school building? So currently, if you take a V-Lax class, you get the credit, it doesn't go into your GPA. Again, that might be an AP class that's online somewhere else, but it's, we receive the credit. If you take a CTE unleveled class, it doesn't go into your GPA, but we're promoting real-world learning in our career pathways. If you take a dual enrollment class, if you're taking a class at the University of New Hampshire or Nashua Community College right now, which is again, already receiving college credit, which could be higher than your AP, you don't, doesn't go into your GPA. Any ELOs not into your GPA or your junior ROTC program, it's not calculated into your GPA. I don't know the rhyme or reason behind it, but that needs to be fixed. If we, if we're going to give students credit and recognize them for being motivated, we have to say, whatever credit you're taking should count and be recognized, so that students who are art-focused and, and looking at really artistic or musically inclined, how do we recognize their excellence? Our students in our CTE pathways, how do we recognize their excellence? We have students leaving with industry credentialed certifications that might be making $50,000, $60,000, $70,000 a year out of high school, and their GPA isn't that high because it doesn't go into their rank? We don't recognize them being intellectually, their curiosity? Again, bigger conversations that we need to have as we involve in these kind of conversations. We're also talking about real-world learning. We had some great conversations with some community partners, Fidelity being one of them. If a student has an internship at Fidelity, should it be recognized? If they're doing real-world learning and it's meeting our competencies? Don't we want to encourage students to actually explore before families are spending $100,000 on higher ed if their, if their child is actually going to like that without feeling like they have to jeopardize their GPA and class ranking? How do we create these gateway to opportunities? I think it's fascinating kind of conversations. It's deeper at that point, and it respects the student's perspective to have that curiosity to explore without feeling that they're going to be losing anything. So again, learn anywhere. Our goal again is, what do our schools look like moving forward? School and learning should not be confined to only school hours. We're in a world that's, it's, it's flat. We have devices that we can be taking classes at night, we have incredible community partners that want to partner with us. We should be rewarding our students in those learning opportunities. So the Department of Education started a new program about Learn Anywhere, and students can receive credits. Should that go into their GPA? I think so. What are those competencies? And again, real-world learning, right now in our current system, we don't recognize that. So these are deeper conversations that I think we need to be having on, what is the root cause? What are we trying to solve? And really, as we heard from, like, our students previously, we want our kids to feel safe at school, to explore multiple learning opportunities, and to be recognized for their excellence and their passions and, and their knowledge and skills, but it just might not be in one system. So we have to look at that a little differently. So Matt, next one? So we're really looking for is, kind of as we move forward, is to eliminate immediately the class rank that was voted on back in May. Working instead of a one-tiered system that was voted on in May, do we have a two-tiered system? We'll get into that as, into the next slide in a second for an example. Do we transition to a two-tiered model through, and include all learning opportunities into the GPA through the class of 2026? And then in conjunction with our portrait of graduate, design and implement a GPA system that recognizes and measures multiple gateways to opportunities, and with a class of 2027, move forward with a no-weighted GPA as approved originally by the BOE in the task force at that point, and again, including all learning opportunities to the GPA. So Matt, just what it kind of would look like? So on the left-hand side is a two-weighted system. So on the left with a 4.0 would be any class that's unweighted, but we recognize all. So it would be on a 4, a 4.0 scale. And then on the right hand would be honors and AP classes. And again, I think we would have to define what constitutes as honors and, honors classes, and that would go into a five-point scale. So we would still recognize students who are in a honors or AP kind of program, or the advanced CTE classes, that would be on a differential-type scale, again, recognizing different pathways and, and some students who are stretching themselves. And then with a class of 2027, our current eighth graders, do we go to a one, a one scale, which is on a 4.0? So that, that's where we're moving, but obviously, over the last couple minutes, this is a complex issue. This isn't just a one, it's only about GPA and a weighted aspect of it. It's truly with, again, kudos to our high school administration and the district over, even going back to 2014, what does competency-based education look like? How do we recognize every student's excellence without only one measure, which is GPA or unweighted GPA or class rank? So we have to recognize students' excellence. Again, and the system might look different, so it's always going to be this constant evolution. And as we have new learning opportunities, we might be revisiting and revising this multiple times as we move forward. So again, I think there's, what I'm asking for the board tonight is some grace in a transition. So I think we can talk about class rank. I really want to recognize the adults or the, the parents who, and guardians who spoke tonight, again, what does the transition look like? Because this is complex. So speaking on behalf of the administration, we can look at a two-tiered system, and that would be fine if we vote on that or the original one-tiered system. The bigger conversation that we need to get, and that could be immediate, or we can really look at, do we make the changes with the eighth grade class? But we're still having the conversations internally. But we're still having the conversations internally with the high school, especially what is a portrait of a graduate? And really, what does, how does that reflect on students' transcripts? That being said, I want to make it clear that all, all classes and all learning opportunities should count. But it is really about that transition and how does it look, what does it look like? So kind of two ways we can look at is, do we go to the two-tiered system immediately and still have those conversations? Or do we wait for the incoming eighth graders into the high school and still have those conversations? So there's a timing, it's a technical issue, but really where we need to get at is, what do our schools look like next year? How do we recognize excellence? And that, again, I think is a little more complex than just a weighted GPA kind of conversation, if that makes sense, and hopefully a little guidance with the board.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Claffey?
Thank you. I want, can I ask the principal, high school principals to come down real quick? I have a real simple question.
The price is right, guys.
You might as well do something. It'd look pretty.
They did, I, I went to the, the GPA thing the other night and these guys were fantastic. I just want to say thank you for putting that on.
As products of the system, too. I think they have firsthand knowledge. So what I don't understand is, without rank in class, why weigh GPA? Like, what's the purpose of weighing GPA if you're no, if you're no longer ranking?
I think that's kind of what we're getting at. So we want to give every student an opportunity to, you know, set their pathway for their future and whatever that might be. So a lot of times for kids, it's, you know, if they're applying for colleges, it's, you know, the level of rigor that you're taking for courses and what you're getting for grades in those classes. And how did that prep you for whatever school that you're applying to? What courses did you take to prepare yourself for that? If you're applying to go for a job, you know, as an HVAC technician, did you take the CTE classes? Did you excel in those areas and the other areas that are related to that? You know, to me, it's, it's about, you know, just focusing in on what's going to be best for you. And I think with GPA and class rank, if you're fighting for those top numbers, you're not necessarily taking an opportunity to, or taking advantage of those opportunities provided to you.
Yeah, I would just probably reiterate many of the same things that I think when working on the task force, the goal was that your transcript spoke for you to help you move on to wherever that next step was. So if you wanted to be an artist and you were heading off to art school, you would probably see a transcript full of art classes on there and you probably were doing well, but that would not reflect in the, in the GPA system we have. And we just felt that coming out of the task force this way, regardless of the pathway chosen, we, I don't see our goal as a school is to rank kids 1 to 450 when they're graduating. I see our goal as a school is to prepare kids for whatever pathway they want. And therefore, if they excel in that pathway, they are recognized because their transcript speaks for themselves how well they did in the level of courses that they thought were challenging for them to get them to where they need to be.
So I was wondering if the task force decided as they're in the middle of this to get, let's get rid of rank in class. To me, it's, the baby's out of the bathwater, so if the baby's out, I mean, rank in class, there's no need to keep weighted. That's, am I wrong in thinking that there's no, the transcript's going to say honors and AP or whatever? It's going to say those things. So what purpose does it serve?
I think you're right.
They're nodding for the record.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I have a lot in front of me. First of all, I'd just like to ask a question of the principals. I know that Dr. Andre, in the meeting before, that there was the parents' meeting at the South School. How come the board didn't get an email that, that night? Because I had a parent send it to me and that's why I showed up, because I got that email.
I typically communicate just to our South parents. I don't, just to be honest, I'm not sure if that would come from me typically for South events.
Yeah, and same, you know, we had, we're instructed that, based on the board meeting, to have a parent information night. So that's what we, Keith and I had kind of coordinated one together to have a North-South parent information night.
I, well, Ms. Bishop, is your child at South School?
North.
North.
It was for North and South parents.
Okay. I was just wondering, because this is something important that maybe the board members should have been at, listening to the parents, how concerned they were, because a lot of it had to do with transparency. I mean, number one thing, that communication has never been our strongest point here. And obviously, I mean, the parents are here and it still hasn't been our strongest point on something this important.
Dr. Andre?
You know, so, also, I did send several questions to Legal. And I guess I'm going to throw a monkey wrench into this because I wanted, I asked Legal, is it appropriate of me to ask the parents who have students that are going to be affected by this? Will this affect their students on their vote that they took that night when we changed every, well, I didn't vote for it either time, when the change was made? Is it going to affect your child in graduation with the weighted GPA? Ms. Brown, is it going to affect your child? Yes. Okay. As far as I'm concerned, you probably, and, and I got it, this is from Legal. However, I, I do understand in this situation, if a board member had a high school student that was going to be significantly impacted by this change, either for better or worse, it would be hard for a board member to make a decision on how to vote that it did not account how it would affect their own child. I do not think it would be inappropriate to ask other board members if they have children that were directly affected by this change as a whole. If they did not, they, I think they could recuse some, recuse would be, would seem to be appropriate. So maybe when these changes were made, I don't know if Ms. Raymond's child is going to be affected. You should have recused yourself.
I, yeah, I'll disagree with that, but.
I thought our rule when it came to recusing yourself from a vote was only if it financially could benefit you.
No.
That's what the policy says.
But I asked, I asked corporate. So I do not think the board could necessarily force that member to recuse themselves, however, because I'm concerned, when the motion was made, the vote was taken, how would this affect your child for a weighted or unweighted GPA? So I was concerned with that because it's better to recuse yourself than to vote on something like this, whether you agree with me or not. It's just the appearance of a conflict. Like I said, I have no skin in the game. My kids aren't in the system. My grandchildren aren't in the system. They're in Meramec.
Excuse me, may I, just real quickly?
I don't have eyes in the back of my head. So yes, please holler out.
Can we, can we focus on this proposal?
I am focusing on it.
Looking back at a decision that was made.
It doesn't matter.
I think she's implying that if we vote tonight.
Of us, let's discuss this.
Well, I am discussing this.
Actually, I heard you discuss a pass vote.
But, but you know what? The pass votes has caused this issue here back in May. Because I went over the minutes and I listened to everything. And one of the votes that were taken, it was recorded wrong because it was eight to one on the vote in May, and that was last November, on, to go with the recommendations of the task force. So that was wrong. I'm just stating here that I didn't vote on this because I felt it was wrong. I felt that we pushed everything up and there was no communications with the parents. And that's the biggest thing, is communications. So I voted against this all the times. And I think that maybe should come back to the table. We should recent the vote that we took and go back to the table because the students that have taken the courses, it's not my job to decide what courses the parents want their children to take. I think there could be a dual enrollment that we talked about, that the CTE, I said this to you, Dr. Andre, about weighted on even CTE programs, because I spoke to somebody outside the district, I've got all the information. But to do this at this point in time, when the parents and the students have decided on the courses that they were going to take, we pull the rug out from underneath them. If these parents and their children are, are competing, we talked about sports and competition, but we can't have it in education. We can't raise the bar. It seems like we keep lowering the bar all the time. We've done that with Common Core. We did that with a lot of other programs we talked about tonight, about bringing back phonics, because we used to have whole language that didn't raise the bar, that put kids in tough situations. So I'm not going to support anything other than going back, reversing everything, and let's go back to the drawing board and figure out when is the good date? And let's get the parents' input once and for all here, because we're making decisions that affect their children. Like, if my children was in the system, I wouldn't be happy either. Thank you.
Ms. Lamphier?
We were elected to make these kind of decisions for the district. The people of Nashua chose us to make those decisions. And the policy states that you should recuse yourself if there's a possibility of a financial benefit. I think that if we went above and beyond the policy and asked half of our board to recuse themselves, we would be doing a disservice to our constituents.
Thank you. Mr. Rogers and then Ms. Oden. Somebody, sorry.
I got confused for a second.
Mr. Sahu.
I just feel like the whole point was missed, that our principals were trying to say is that, like, talking about emphasizing the importance of the transcript and what the, all of the information that the transcript contains, whether it be the, what type of classes you're taking, the specialty that you're taking, or the rigor, I just think that, like, I think the whole point was missed right there when you said that, like, by making the decision one way or the other, we're changing things. We aren't really changing anything, we're just, or trying to change perceptions. That's the only thing. Nothing has really been changed. We haven't changed anyone's transcript, right, by this. No, the grades are all the same. The courses that our students have already taken are the same, and nothing has changed like that. And we're talking about changing mentality, you know? Where, I was also at that meeting, too, by the way. I was sitting upstairs on the balcony.
Cheater.
I didn't want to be in the public for that one, but I was really disappointed with the rhetoric that I heard at that meeting. And I am very open to all of the public conversation about this. I've been having all these conversations with people in my community, with students, especially, and a lot of students whose parents were coming and voicing their opinions. And their students happen to have differing opinions, for some cases. But I just, I think that we've talked a little bit about extrinsic versus intrinsic motivations. The students in the real world aren't going to always have this carrot over their head, this little benefit. And I, whether you can agree to disagree, they're not going to always have that. They're not going to have that, this little push of that point four boosted if you take your AP classes, because that's just not how the real world works in every single scenario. And we're putting a lot of pressure here. I was hearing that, oh, like, what about the winners? We're using these sports analogies, winners versus losers. But are we saying that our students who aren't taking the weighted classes, the weighted benefit, they're the losers here? Because that's what it seems like. And that's what I'm hearing and that's how I'm interpreting it? You can disagree, but that's just how it's coming off of, to me and a few people who are at this table. I don't know.
Thank you. Ms. Oden?
First, I, I want to thank all the parents that have come and spoken to this issue. You have, you're obviously passionate about this, but you've been very respectful, and I appreciate that, because sometimes we don't always get that. So I do want to thank all of you who have taken the time to come here to speak, parents, students, everyone. I was on the board six years ago when this issue was brought to us. We had two students from South, Haley Sweeney and Josh Gao, came with the team, and they asked that class rank be eliminated. And it was because it was causing unhealthy competition at the high school. Students were given a password when they came into school in kindergarten, and some of them never changed it. Matter of fact, the district just recently, and it's something I had pushed for, are making the students now change their password. But students were memorizing other students' passwords to go into their account to see what grades they were getting on the past test. That's not healthy competition. That was a big problem. And as I said, it was students from South that came to us. When I look back today, I was looking at some of the past emails, a lot of the things I've discounted, I've discontinued. And as I said, I, I was on the board for eight years previously. I got off in January and I'm back here because Mrs. Zim left. It, it's been, been a problem for a long time. And I, I just think our students deserve better than unhealthy competition. I think, I, I personally, and I'm, I keep listening to all the conversation that's going on, I personally don't have a problem with weighted GPAs. And if I, as I look back, I meant to say this, as I look back on my emails, it wasn't weighted GPAs that were concerned, it was the class rank. Class rank was driving what students were doing. I don't think that's healthy. Sometimes it was like, I think these two men could tell you, probably a thousandth of a point. Yeah, is that fair to do to kids? Say, you're only number two, you missed it by a thousandth of a point? When they knew some kids were going in and finding out what somebody else did on a test? I don't, I don't think that's, I don't think that's healthy at all. I think for me, and I'm still learning, I would like to see something where you can, can take a weighted course, but look at maybe what they do in colleges. Summa cum laude, magna cum laude, cum laude. And it doesn't matter what you're in, but to, to separate kids by a hundredth of a point or a tenth of a point, I, I just don't think that does anything good for our students. And when, when students are going in, and I've been told it still happens occasionally, even with having the emails changed, having them, having them going in and forcing them to change their passwords, I think we need to be careful about this. And I think for the health of the students and for the betterment of the community, we need to look at this very carefully. So, but again, thank you all for, for being so polite and so thoughtful in your presentations.
Mr. Claffey?
Can I make a motion relative to this recommendation?
Yes.
And I'm not sure about the wording, but I move, I'm sorry.
No, if you want, so in the, the GPA presentation, the recommendations are written down if you want it easier, if you're going to be doing something that's already been...
Oh, okay, I just shortened it, but.
Say whatever you want.
I wrote, I moved that we approve the GPA transition recommendation as proposed by the superintendent for the classes of 2024, 2025, and 2026.
I'll second that.
So I was just trying to boil it down.
So as, as presented, so Mr. Claffey made that motion and Ms. Oden seconded it. I just need to clarify, do the transition to the two-tier model, not the unweighted model?
That's the recommendation, so.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was in there.
I had that originally two-tiered, but I'm sorry.
No, it's fine. It's, I think we can clarify. Okay, so any further discussion? Ms. Brown?
So I'm in support of this motion. I think it still allows, I think the important part that we're looking at here is really referencing what Mr. Sahu said and in the presentation that we got from Dr. Andre. We're like on the precipice right now in Nashua of a shift of what our education system could be. We can take our district K through 12 and look at it as a way to launch kids into whatever future they choose, as opposed to traditionally, you go through the... you go through the model, you learn these classes, you do it in this order, and then, and then when you're in 11th or 12th grade is when you start thinking about what you're going to do post-graduation. This gives us an opportunity to start thinking about those opportunities much sooner. We can look at the dual enrollment classes. The, I actually didn't know until tonight that they were not in part of your GPA. They should be. The fact that kids are taking college-level classes and they're not part of it, that's a mistake. Also a mistake is the fact that you can take an AP class and get a D and get, which, and get a B in a foundations-level class, and you get the same grade. D work is not acceptable work at any level, at least not in my house. But I am looking forward, if this goes through, this is the first piece of a greater puzzle that we can take and look at, the system in Nashua that we're trying to change the education system to build pathways, to build opportunities, and to also have students to really take a hold of what their future is going to look like. And I think it goes back to our One Nashua concept, that all students are valuable in the work they're putting in, and all effort is valued equally, even when the outcomes are different. And I look forward to seeing more students try more things and take opportunities to take risks and explore opportunities that they may not otherwise have if they were just exclusively taking the AP class load. I do have one question for clarification on this. So with the two-tiered score, or the two-tiered method, students will, so the classes of 24, 25, 26, they'll have the opportunity to choose which scale they want to use? Or is that just, we're going to keep this scale until, for the next three years, and then for the freshmen, they can transition? Is that how it works?
I think that's what the plan would be, yeah. So the 24, 25, 26, if you're taking an honors or an AP class, we would be using the 5.0 scale. All of the classes would fall under the 4.0. So even classes that we don't currently, are currently unleveled or don't currently carry a weight within the GPA, so all courses would be covered. And then the thought was the transition to the 2027 class with the 4.0 scale was approved prior.
So that's eighth grade, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm personally a little disappointed, because I think I want to just go for it and implement it, because I think it's, why, why wait when we know it's going to be a huge benefit to students? But, you know, if that's what you guys are recommending, I'll support the administration.
Yeah, I would actually agree with Ms. Brown, that if we could go straight into an unweighted system, that's what I would support. But I do think that the rollout, just how it got to the district, you know, it could have been a little bit better. I think maybe a step-down, a step-down approach in getting people ready to go into an unweighted system. It also, I think it really highlights that we can still have students do AP classes and honors classes. One parent who was up here listed off a multitude of after-school activities where children, you know, win awards, the Lego competition, math, spelling bees. There are opportunities within your college package to, to show your rank in certain, in certain subjects. But I think for the overall intent of the school and the direction that we're going in as a district, which is a much more holistic model, that accounts for everybody's strengths, so that every child leaves high school feeling like they accomplished something, did their best work, were supported. I think that's the direction that the district is going. And by reflecting that, within our grading system, we're showing students that we value all of their work and all of their efforts. One of the things that keeps coming up is, is the sports and making the sports analogies when we're doing this. I think it's helpful to remember that sports is a choice. School is not a choice. Every school, every student, every child under 18 in New Hampshire has to go to school, which means we have to provide them with the opportunities to succeed. Sports, if you're not good at football, or if you're not Shaq, you're not going to go play basketball, and it's not going to affect the rest of your life. So by creating a system in which every child is going to leave an obligation that they have to do, we're showing them that we support them. And, yeah, again, the guidance counselor, you know, when they hand out the, when you go, the school report, there we go. That's an important component to your college packet. It's not just one thing that goes out there. The reputation of the school comes right with your, your information. And it's like, you hear about schools that just always give out As to their students no matter what, and, and at what point does an A, you know, it, it doesn't mean anything if everybody's getting it. And I think our school report shows the rigor of our classes and the curriculum that we're doing. So I am begrudgingly in support of a two-tiered system while we work down to an unweighted system. However, I would have liked to do an unweighted system, but that is not my, that's my one vote. Ms. Brown?
Would, for the purpose of discussion, would there be interest in the board to just go ahead and go back to our original vote, or to, I mean, because I feel the same way. I actually am kind of doing this in a begrudging fashion. I would rather rip this Band-Aid off and get this ball moving and make some real systemic impact now, instead of four years from now. And for the record, this will affect both of my children, who do take honors and high-level classes. But honestly, I don't care if they're getting a 4.0 or a 5.0, because bottom line is, I want to see good work, and I want to see hard effort all the time. So.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I guess last November was brought up at the meeting at the high school. If we go to the two-tiered system, is this going to affect scholarships at this point in time for these students? No one's asking that question. Is this going to affect any scholarships?
Our seniors are the, primarily the graduating of the class that would be applying for scholarships, and they're currently under the system that we had last year.
So.
I also feel, Dr. Andre shared an email today from one of our students, and they were asking to calculate the GPA to a 4.0 scale for the purpose of the scholarship. And our counselors get that all the time, so they have to go and take our 5.4 scale, convert it to a 4.0 scale, and then share it with scholarship committees.
I still think, and I just want to respond, I don't think any student is a loser. My children never went through AP courses. My kids went through automotive and other classes. I felt that they were successful in whatever they did, because not every child is going to be in AP classes, and not every child is going to be in automotive. They're going to do what they do best in life, whatever. Some are hands-on, some are books. And to even think that I would think that a student is a loser is beyond my comprehension. And I, and I don't think what you're doing, I think, is marvelous where you are in life. I think you've done great through the school systems. I think you're excellent. I think you're a model of excellence here on the board, both of you. And I think that if we can get more of our students to see what you're doing, that's, that's even better. And do I understand about the cheating? Yeah, I do. Students always cheat. But we've got to get to a point here, that we can't do anything to these last, next couple of years of students that have already planned everything. So I'm, I'm just not 100% sure that I, I'm going to be the lone vote again. I'm pretty sure of that, you know? And I get it, that we were elected to make hard decisions, and that's what the policy says. But you know what? We still have to communicate with the community, because, again, I'm not the one who makes the decisions for their kids. I'm not making the decisions for yours, Ms. Bishop. I'm not making the decision for yours personally. I know what I had to do as a parent when my kids were young, and I put them in the direction that I thought that they were going to be. They didn't want AP, they weren't going to college. My kids were in the automotive class, okay? So that's what they did best. Our young men here, they're serving on the board, they're great. I mean, one of them I was talking to, Mr. Rogers talking to me about medical school, am I correct? And I think he'd be an excellent doctor if he becomes a doctor. That doesn't mean that he's going to be an excellent auto mechanic. Two different things, you know? So every child learns differently. Every child has, and their parents have different goals for them. And at this point in time, I don't know about this two-tiered system. I'm really concerned that things are rolling out, and we should have done what the recommendations was. And this is why we're in this situation. Again, we, we have recommendations, we don't follow any recommendations, and we make up our own rules and recommendations. So I'm not going to support this.
Brown?
Ms. Brown? So, Ms. Johnson, I think the reason that we brought this back to the floor was, not only because we, I will totally agree that the communication rollout from this was disastrous, as always. But is there any version of, I really want to know, is there any version of editing the grade point scale that you're going to be supportive of? Because if not, then, and that's okay, because it's okay to different opinions. But if there's no version of this, then why are we editing what was already put in place, the decision was already made by the majority of the board?
Well, our administration came back and gave you a two-tiered system. I just don't believe, at this point in time, where our students and the families have made decisions, it's not going to hurt them. We, we had a recommendation, how to roll everything out. At that point in time, we could have had more community discussion, which we don't open up anything to the community. We have parents coming in here. And I said to the members of the Board of Edu, Board of Alderman one night when I went to their meeting, do you know why people get angry at us? Because we're their last bit of hope, because nobody listened to them along the way. So that's why they scream at the Board of Alderman, and that's why they scream at us or get upset with us. Maybe not screaming here, but they get upset with us because the communication lines are not open. We work for them. They don't work for us. And that's what we forget as elected officials. And when we take everything into consideration, and these parents didn't have their day here, why are we doing this? We had recommendations here, and we just, when, in November, the board passed the recommendations. I didn't vote for it, but they passed the recommendations because I asked, what about the scholarships? What about all these questions that nobody else had asked? But the board voted on the recommendations to go with the task force. And then in May, it gets brought back, and we come up with different recommendations. Everything that was with the task force, it didn't work. And we moved everything up to 2024.
Ms. Brown? Ms. Brown?
So.
No, we, we don't have audience participation until second public comment. You can speak then. I, we're having a discussion here, and we can vote on it, but at this point, the audience is an audience.
So before we take this vote, I just have one last question. Can, what is, I should ask you. What, what is your number one recommendation? If you were going to rank this sort, what's your first choice? Is it the one at the top?
So, number one, I think, is a given, eliminating class rank. And I think there's an aspect of, of, again, the second one, again, is complex. And so I think the two-tiered model was kind of splitting the baby a little bit. So we had a vote in May, but we also had a recommendation from the task force to say, start with the incoming class and roll in the transition. So I do hear the parents, right? And I think, you know, if we really had to push, because we want to get to that, my bigger question is the portrait of a learner. What does excellence look like in every classroom, every day, for every student? That's our bigger, that's where we need to get to. And so the transition aspect in, you know, the impact of students and their GPA, this is real tonight, but it's not really our conversation. So if I really had to, if you wanted to push in the real recommendation, start with the incoming class at eighth grade, right? So of what that looks like in a one-tiered system. Because we do have students already in the system, and, you know, we're changing the game right now. But every single day, every, you know, we have a professional development meeting next week. Our educators are working, and our, and our pairs, and our secretaries, everybody in the school system is trying to make the system better every single day. And so what does proficiency look like? How do we get students involved to have agency, empowerment, ownership in their learning? That's what we need to get to. And that's the bigger conversation. So our students could be like, I love coming to school because I feel part of it, right? I feel welcome, I feel responsible. People know me, they know my talents. It's not about the GPA. It's not about the weight. It's that feeling of someone having pride, as Mr. Oddly was talking earlier about the T-shirts. That's the student we want, want to make. It's not about, do I have a 4.7 GPA or a 4.8 GPA? We have to create that culture. So if I had to push tonight and really say for the board, again, we made a decision in, in May, because this is so complex, and we have, again, students already in the system, start with the incoming eighth grade, right? Go back to the original task force recommendation of a seamless approach, because even with the incoming eighth graders, you're still going to have, or ninth, when they're in ninth grade next year, you're still going to have three grade levels on the old system. That's always going to happen. So you're going to have students sitting in, in art classes, or, you know, those elective classes that aren't English nine, English 10, English 11. You're going to have a senior sitting with a sophomore in two, two separate systems. That's going to happen. What we want to get is that, does every student feel like they have a viable gateway to an opportunity that they're going to have success? That's the bigger conversation. So the transition, to me, is a technical conversation. Do we want to do it in now? Do we want to do a two-tiered system? Do we want it with incoming eighth graders? Seamless incoming eighth graders. But that doesn't stop the work that we have to do as an administration, and working with our teachers and every single adult in the system, to say, what is a portrait of a learner pre-K through 12? That's our end goal. It's not the class rank. And it, so I hate to say it that kind of bluntly. So seamlessly, it's with the eighth grade. But again, I think there was decisions made last year that, again, we want everybody, and we do it in education, everybody to save face. But let's go back to the task force recommendation with an incoming class, eliminate class rank, and then have those hard conversations of, what does proficiency really look like? Those are the harder kind of conversations, and I think those are the inspiring conversations. So that would be my recommendation. Do that seamless, don't worry about the two-tiered, start with the eighth graders. Parents who are already saying that our kids are in the system, it is what it is. But again, how do we get our students, so that our students currently in the high school, again, it's not about the GPA. Do they have agency in their learning and ownership? And that's, again, the, the end goal.
So you're, just to clarify, you're saying, continue on with the current weighted system, and then stop the weighted system for the, the eighth graders?
Correct. Yep. Not, again, I think the system's broken, but in that kind of, like, but all classes have to count.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Right. How do we get all the classes to count? That's what I, that's what I like, is that it kept, that all of the classes count towards the GPA, not just the AP honors classes.
Yes. Can we also, is that part of this? Is that all the classes are going to get calculated, like, immediately for this, even for the ones, the students that are enrolled in the current system? Or is that just a total pain?
I think the issue would be that if, Matt, do you mind going back to the first, or what our current ranking system is?
And thank you guys for spontaneously speaking to this. We know we didn't prep you for it, so.
So I think the issue is going to be, we don't have an unleveled scale. So, you know, your art classes, your CTE, unleveled classes, your band, chorus, those don't have a quality point value assigned to them. So we wouldn't be able to include any of those into the current ranks unless we were to develop that system or put them into one of these other pieces.
And to go way back to when we had levels, and Mr. Claffey, if I remember this, 1, 2, 3, 4, our unlevelled classes, just at the time, assumed they were, like, foundation level, so that they were given that numeric, you know what I mean? And we didn't think that was fair at all. So that was our first step, probably, I don't even know when that changed, but like 25 years ago, on this conversation, was the change from 1, 2, 3, 4, to honors extension, foundations, well, AP, and unleveled, because it was not fair for our unlevelled courses just automatically have the lowest numeric
Right.
number given to them. number given to them.
So under the two-tiered model, we can effectively make all classes count. But if we continue with the current model, there are classes that don't count. So the two-tiered model allows for immediate success for every student now. I'm just clarifying. Yeah? So, because, I mean, my goal, and obviously, I'm one of many, my goal is I want every child's education to feel valued no matter what. And I feel like if we, if this is the way to make automotive count towards somebody's GPA, the two-tiered model is how we do it, instead of having three more years of students' hard work not counting in the same capacity. So it feels a little bit like kicking the can down the road, but at the same time, it widens the base of the triangle by doing the two-tiered system. So, okay, my mind's made up. I'm doing the two-tiered system. Sorry, guys. So I think, I'm not seeing a lot of enthusiastic, like, eye contact, so I'm going to call the vote on Mr. Claffey's motion to eliminate the cross, continue with the elimination of the class rank, transitioning to the two-tiered model, and include all learning opportunities into the GPA formula through the class of 2026, in conjunction with our portrait of a graduate, design and implement a GPA system that recognizes and measures multiple gateways to opportunity and success. That is the current motion on the table that Mr. Claffey made and that Ms. Oden seconded. I'm going to say no more further comment or discussion. So all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Aye.
What?
I'm sorry, I didn't go with the, I didn't talk fast enough.
So Ms. Johnson, Ms. Lamb fear, and Ms. Darling are saying no.
I said yes.
Oh, sorry. So Ms. Johnson and Ms. Darling are saying no to the motion on the table, so it passes. Compromise is hard. And I appreciate everybody for participating in this discussion. And I know that our principals have put in years of hard work on this. And I know Mario has been the speaker on this, but just as a personal aside, you guys have really spearheaded a shift in the view of students. And I know the guy sitting over on this side of the table got a lot of praise for it, but I really want to extend my sincerest thanks to you guys for looking at all of the students in every capacity, and the respect that you have for them is evident in how you do your work and in how you present changes and how you implement changes. And I'm just, I'm grateful to be a part of this school system because you guys are at the helm. So thank you very much. You can go back to your seats now if you want.
You're going to head home.
Okay, that's good, because we still have non-public after this. Okay. Thank you for that. We still have a lot of stuff to do. Mr. Claffey, let's just do liaison report right now.
Oh, sure. Can we, I'd like to see that new logo, though.
I do, too. You want to pop this up so everybody can see the new? Have you seen, isn't it awesome?
Oh.
Look at that. I mean, it was already up earlier.
I can start, if you want, I'm ready.
Gorgeous. Okay, liaison report.
So JS, JS, SBC, last Thursday night.
I think you turned yourself off.
What? Last Thursday night, we were informed, first of all, by the JS
S.
Thank you, BC. The Board of Alderman approved the $16 million bond for Maine Dunstable and Burchill Improvements. The first presentation was by the Harriman Firm, the architects. They've been meeting with Maine Dunstable and Burchill, which I didn't know, they're sister schools, they have similar plans, but mirror images, among other things, plans for natural lighting in the gyms. McCarthy, the playground and athletic equipment are ongoing. No other highlights. Harvey Construction Updates, the McCarthy Middle School, as of last week, two of the four area roofs are complete. The third-story framing is complete on some of the sections or areas. And this week, they've been fireproofing the metal framing with spray. Some kind of spray, fire retardant?
Yep.
Mr. Donovan had the pleasure of seeing that in action. The final paving of D.
Antonio.
Thank you. D'Ortonio Dry was supposed to be done this week, so the neighbors, whose lives have been disrupted by heavy equipment, hopefully, that will stop next week. Let's hope. Pennachuck, the gym is done, and the Learning Commons Edition will be done in December. 55 Franklin, new steps on the outside, and I think they said kids will be moving into the second floor late this month. The next meeting is November 17th.
It is. Thank you.
Oh, and I'll pass around.
He comes with pictures. Okay, so we are now going into new business. So I will hand the floor back over to Dr. Andre. I've seen this. I was at the meeting.
So under the new business, to make the recommendation to approve the security action for education grants funded by the Public School Infrastructure Funds for 12 Nashville schools totaling $281,600. You received a memo, a lot of it is security-related, so it's not for public information, but it is for security upgrades for our schools. So we're hoping that you approve this recommendation this evening.
Thank you. So I am looking for a motion to approve the Security Action for Education, SAFE Grants funded by the Public School Infrastructure Funds, RSA 198, 15Y for 12 Nashville schools totaling $281,600.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Do I have a second? Ms. Oden, thank you. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
The next item is a recommendation for the school district to participate once again in the New Hampshire Youth Risk Behavior Survey for the upcoming 2223 school year. This is a survey that our schools have participated in the past.
Does this still come with the new policy where we have to update parents about the surveys and then they will get the survey?
Correct.
Okay. It's a bit redundant. But, okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the Nashville School District participation in the New Hampshire Youth Risk Behavior Survey for the 2022-2023 school year.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Lamb fear. Any comments or questions?
Hey, question.
Go ahead.
What's in it for us as a teacher who used to have to proctor these? I certainly, it seemed to me to be some of the, some questions that maybe parents should to know. So what's in it for us?
Excuse me. So a lot of it is trends that are happening with our students. So again, when we're looking at our counseling wraparound services, so again, as a higher level of what's the current status of our students, and at the end of the day, do we have the right supports for them? So it helps us in our internal and external partnerships.
Financial benefit?
I don't believe so. Yeah.
So it collects, it's the state and federal government that collects information in regards to teen risk and safety, and it allows for, this is my understanding, it allows for specific grants to come our way. Like, if we have a higher rate of teen pregnancy,
Okay.
they would cater kind of federal funding to come through to us to address that. Whereas if we had no issues with, like, teenage elephant riding use, then they wouldn't send us money for that. So it's just a way of helping guide how the funding comes and what it covers. Is that correct?
And Boys and Girls Club, United Way, they don't get, Boys and Girls Club doesn't get anything?
Not from this survey, not from this. But it would help, like, we could, to Ms. Bishop's point, that if we saw a need, we would be reaching out to community partners and potential funding. Is it just another data point?
And it just shows, sorry, it just kind of shows regular CDC change on nationwide campaigns in regards to, you know, like, they decrease the amount of teens smoking cigarettes and vaping is now new, so they get to focus on something else. But it just shows national trends and helps highlight how we're shifting, how we're shifting, what we're shifting into, and the positive or negative benefits of whatever interventions are happening. So it's just data collecting. Oh, you're telling Adam to, thank you, Mr. Marko. Okay, so all
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
So this is data that's collected, sent to the state and to the federal government?
Yes.
Okay. I won't be supporting this.
Ms. Brown?
And parents have an opt-out option.
Correct.
Yeah. And the survey was in our packet, so the parents can review all of the questions that are on there as early as now. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none? Oh, just, Ms. Brown, I know you're taking the notes, just Ms. Darling is in here, so we have to note that she's, when she left. So all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so Ms. Brown, Ms. Johnson, vote nay, motion passes. And for the record, Ms. Darling left the room at, what is it, 8:56, so a couple minutes ago. I'll announce when she comes back in. Okay, continue on. Oh, that's the non-public. Can I make a recommendation that we do second public comment and then wrap up the meeting with the non-public? I'm not anticipating any motions that need to happen, it's just information. So once we do second public comment, we can go into non-public and essentially end the public portion of our meeting. Do I have consensus on that?
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I'm only one person.
Ms. Darling's back at 9:01. Okay, so second public comment. This is for items not on the agenda. Mr. Marku.
Hello.
Hello, welcome.
My name is Adam Marku. I live at Ford jewelry lane. I am the president of the Nashville Teachers Union, and I will speak on behalf of the Nashville Teachers Union in a moment. However, I have not addressed anything related to class rank. As a parent of a junior here, well, not here, over at Nashville High School South, I have been watching this play out and agree in some cases that our district has a problem with communication. I've shared those concerns with every superintendent I've worked with. I do think they're getting better. One can hope that moving forward, the communication that we had around the naming of McCarthy Middle School and the, what is it, the, it's a Mustang, but what do they call that?
Horse? Maskot.
Maskot, thank you. Will be as robust when it comes to important academic decisions for our students and families. One thing that I learned tonight, and I, as an educator, should probably have known this before, my junior will leave with nine college credits at the end of this semester for his culinary experience. And the fact that those don't count towards his GPA is concerning to me. I don't know what the right answer is to this problem. I'm very proud of the work he does. He loves his culinary classes. I wish he'd cook more at home, frankly. His baking is coming along and trying to outdo me with telling me how to sift things, and I don't agree with sifting things. But I think a larger conversation about the direction that this goes, because I do have two children in elementary school that will be here coming through, and who knows where the pendulum will go when we get there, because, look, we're back to phonics. So, because phonics was a thing, and then it wasn't a thing, and now it's back. So I do, though, as a parent, appreciate hearing from other parents and their perspective. So there's a lot of perspective, and I don't know how you sift through all that, but good luck with that. Now, NTU President Adam Marku back here, put my dad hat away. One of the nephews this year did not go to a teacher. It went to a paraeducator. And I want to separate that out, because often our paraeducators don't get the recognition that they deserve. So Jean Marie Eckstein from Charlotte Ave, and bias Charlotte Ave teacher here, is one of the premier paras that I have ever had the privilege to work for. And why I bring this up and separate her from her 12 colleagues that won is our paras in general do not get the credit, the acknowledgement, or the salary, you knew this would come to their contract, that they deserve. We, as a district, would not survive our day without the dedicated paraeducators that are in our schools. When I started teaching in first grade in 2008, I shared a paraeducator with my colleague. We got the right, picked the schedule that she had with our two classrooms and made it work for us. We could be flexible in when we needed coverage. Fast forward, I went to fifth grade, got promoted to fifth grade to the big kids who could tie their shoes and zip their coats. And I had 31 students, my two colleagues had 31. In that year, each of us had a paraeducator dedicated to our classroom from the day the second school started till it ended, including our teacher prep time. And I mention that because having them part of our fifth-grade teacher prep time meant that the three of them and the three of us as educators, the six of us met almost every day. And we moved kids from reading groups to math groups to this, to that, based on their needs. So sometimes I had kids from my colleagues, and my, the para that worked with me had kids from the other classroom, and vice versa, and all around. Today, we all know, we don't have enough paras or teachers or anything, right? Instead of having that type of model, they are in three or four, and sometimes five classrooms a day, pulled from here and there and everywhere, subbing for teachers, being lunch monitors, a myriad of other things. Now, in some of those cases, they are compensated additionally for their time. But they don't have the time with their classroom colleagues anymore to do that. And so as we move towards finally, hopefully, going to mediation and settling this contract, I will be here chronicling the efforts that the paraeducators do for our students in our classrooms every day. And I know I am not the only teacher that would say, would not have survived certain classes without the support and dedication from the para that worked next to me. So as we move towards that mediation, I'm hoping that we can find some funding to adequately compensate them for the services that they provide to our classrooms every day. And as one of the Board of Aldermen said in the last contract that we ratified, they are the most bang for our buck, but we need some more bucks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marku. Roger Dusset?
Roger Dusset, 20 Marshall Street. It was brought to my attention, and I don't know how many of you know, that a gun was brought to this school.
So, can I, I just want to
It was an airsoft gun.
But hold on, I just, I need to address that there are certain things that we may not be able to speak about because it's, it just has some identifying information. So is this, I don't think we can speak about this in here, but you are more than
Well, it's open public. It's, this is what I want to talk about.
No, but not every, not
I don't have a name, so it doesn't matter there. But the problem was, the school was not put in a shelter in place or a lockdown. But the problem was, the school was not put in a shelter in place or a lockdown. There's a kid in a school with a gun. The hell! We got an email from Mr. Burns, not a robo-call, but an email. Not everybody checks their email all day long. This had to change. I am very pissed about this. Think of the what-ifs. What if that gun would have gone off? Somebody would have been hurt. I've been shot, I've been shot with a BB gun, I've been shot with a paintball gun, and they hurt. A BB will penetrate you. An airsoft gun is a BB. Okay? So the school should have been sheltered in place until the child was removed from the school. But no, they did not do that. And then I'm also, then I also decided to look up your policies and procedures, and I hope that you decide to follow through with them, which includes a one-year expulsion from school, 365 days. And I don't want to hear that the kid got transferred to a private school, because it could happen again there. I just want to know that when my daughter comes back onto the school tomorrow, is she going to be safe? Because, see, I know, and I double-checked everything, that you guys have to have a special meeting about this. And you have 10 days from the time of the incident. And if you haven't had your meeting yet, get on it, because that kid can come back to school. And if he comes back and decides this time he's going to shoot somebody, you better believe you will have some very pissed-off parents. Me being a Marine, if I would have been here, he would have found the ground real hard, real fast, and probably ended up with some broken bones. Now, I don't know if you guys know the difference between an airsoft gun and a real gun. If you were standing here, and I held up both of them, you wouldn't be able to tell. An airsoft gun is supposed to have an orange tip.
Right.
And if it doesn't have a tip, if the cop would have seen that, that kid could have been shot. So I hope that this is going to get some high presence, and maybe the parents should know what is the outcome of this. Because I asked a lot of people, and nobody knew about it. Other teacher, other parents that have kids in this, no, I didn't know about it. Oh, check your email, that's where it was. But I'm saying, this has to change. Because if it happens again, I'm not going to be real happy. I will find the most powerful lawyer in the world, and I will sue somebody, and you ain't going to like me. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Doucette. Again, if we could refrain, oh, you've already corrected me on this, too. Jay-
Test, it's a test.
It is a test. Parikh?
Yes.
All right, again, Jay Parikh, 68 Cherrywood Drive. I have a couple of questions, because I was paying very close attention when Mr. Superintendent was talking. From based on what I just heard him say, that his son, who's taking culinary classes, doesn't get credit on his GPA, and I heard the two principals say that there is no way they can go back and give kids the credit, but when you specifically ask the question that will this, this new two-tier thing, system, will give everybody the credit for the CTE and other classes they've taken, I kind of saw a Bill Clinton moment. Mr. Superintendent did not say yes, but from what I understand, what I heard from him and what I heard from the two principals, they don't have an easy way for a junior who took CTE classes to give them the GPA to transition them into a five-point scale. And the whole vote was based on Mr. Superintendent's answer on your question. So I don't understand how, how, we're talking about communication all day, and you two are sitting right here with so many people, and everybody here got up and wrote their name down, because they heard what the principal said, what you asked, and what answer he gave. So let's get better at communicating, because that's when people get mad, spend hours and hours coming to these meetings. I'm sure all of you would like to go home, too. But if this keeps happening, you guys get vote on bad information, we're going to come back again. So how can we fix it? Forget sending emails and surveys, we can't even fix this. And then the other example he gave was, I appreciate everything you presented, your presentation was really good, but you said it's very easy for Shaq to make the dunks versus this kid who's trying, or whatever, the guy five foot eight, is trying to score. Shaq gets paid millions just because of his abilities. He doesn't get paid for trying. Same thing, a kid who excels, like this two gentlemen here, lots of AP classes, lots of smart kids, he's going to be a doctor because he's talented and he worked hard through school. We talk about rewarding their skills, rewarding their expertise, but then when it comes to voting, we come back to rewarding the effort. You have to reward their talent, and that's what weighted GPA gives you, is it allows the kid to know where they are, not public knowledge. Rewarding the effort, yes, figure out a different way of rewarding. Like he said, we have work to do in three years to figure out how we want to revamp the whole thing. Makes sense. But then one answer changed the whole thing, because you guys took a vote based on his answer. So we need to figure out how to fix this. We don't need too many Bill Clintons here, where I didn't do this, based on small definition. I'm sorry, but this is a little bit frustrating.
Thank you. Divya Nagri?
Do you want to ask a quick, quick question? I know it's unorthodox. We've had a very unorthodox night, though. So I didn't think I was going to get up again. So Divya Nagri, 14 Annabelle Court. But as a CTE teacher, I felt compelled to basically set the record straight, because, and Mr. Rogers can actually speak to this as well, because he's graduated from the biotech program that I'm a teacher of. It is a misleading statement to say that a student is not getting a GPA reflection of a CTE course. There is an option to take, see some CTE courses at an honors level, in which case it is factored into the GPA. So many CTE classes are offered at the honors level, like Mr. Rogers has taken. His CTE program is factored into his GPA. The college credits, yes, are then going to be used for whatever college, you can then transfer those. My daughter is a sophomore at the University of Connecticut. She also graduated from the Biotechnology CTE program. She was able to use those college credits, and then she was able to get elective credit for that at the University of Connecticut. But if you take it at the honors level, it does factor into the GPA. So saying something that's misleading, I wanted to make sure that I set this record straight, being an educator who is teaching a CTE class for the past nine years. Okay, so I just want to make sure, because the vote was taken based on, it seemed like that was the direction. So I was hoping that somebody would correct that, but being a CTE teacher, I could not sit by and have misinformation spread. On another note, with Mr. Marko's point, for the paraeducators, they really are the lifeblood of our school and our community. I've worked with several paraeducators with students I do support. They do, they need to get a pay raise. We need more paraeducators to support educators in our school system. They are essential. They're essential partners to support educators as we try to help all of our students. So that's another point I wanted to make. Another point about the two-tier system that my daughter brought up is that there are some courses that are required to be taken unleveled, and some courses that, you know, you don't have a choice. And if those are factored into the GPA, those are also going to alter the system, because there was no choice that was actually made by that. Freshman writing is the perfect example for that. So I just also wanted to bring that up on the record, just so that that is there, so that you know that, as, just so that you guys know that. So just wanted to, mainly about the CTE courses, so I'm happy to talk more about that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Vishal Prakash?
I hope I'm getting better at these.
It is Prakash.
Prakash.
Thank you. I actually came prepared telling a story. I don't think that story is relevant now, because we're going back to what we were doing again. We just voted on a new motion without the communication back to the parents, but what this affected us. You guys just decided in the middle of it to vote on a new system again to be implemented, where there was a change in answer, with zero communications back to the parents. Zero communications. Everybody here highlighted the same communication problem. The gentleman here, thank God for his service, that was an alarming issue that I don't think anybody here knew. I did not know. So there is still a communication issue that has not been resolved. And it's frustrating that the board would take another vote on a system with zero communication, zero education, zero feedback from the students that are most affected. Nothing at all. And there was lots of sports analogy mentioned, and then it was said that we should not use a sports analogy. If sports is not an analogy for education, what is? Real life? Let's talk about some real-life incidents. Let's take the Armed Services, where there was an example about a scholarship. What would happen if every single Armed Services member today was allowed to be a Navy SEAL? Just because they put in the effort, they got up the drill and did the drill, they're a Navy SEAL? No, it does not work that way. There is an additional effort that they have to do, they have to put in, before they can become a SEAL. So let's talk about treating kids. I think all of you would have heard about the 14th award example. Has anybody heard about the 14th example, the 14th award example? It's awarded to junior kids, so kids basically in kindergarten, first and second grade at baseball, and that's a participation certificate. These kids are not in kindergarten. They're stepping out to the real world, where there is real competition. Now, there was talk about a carrot being dangled. I'm not sure what the carrot is, when an AP kid has to stay up till 4:00 a.m. to finish their work. We are saying that we need to put all kids at the same level. Fantastic. Let's figure out a way to do that. But then let's figure out if the requirements to get into university for a medical degree is the same as that of a culinary degree. Do we know that? No, we don't, and that's the fact. Finally, there was an earlier comment made that I find very condescending, and I find quite irritating as an American. There was a comment saying that about my community. I thought we were all Americans here. There is no my community, there is no your community. We are all Americans, we are all working to better the system. Thank you very much.
Sure, sorry.
Sir Jim Patel.
Sir Jim Patel.
Let me make easy for you.
Thank you.
So as Dr. Andrew Manson, am I right? We talk about like these, Vishal has excellent point, there is zero communication, and we voted again, same thing. So there's many questions asked to Ms. Johnson, am I right? Why you keep like staying with the same great system? Are you going to change your mind? She's right. We're not respecting the task force. Why we wasted money for three years? If we had to make the decision just on the emotion, it was whole class ranking, we were dragging the whole weighted GPA in that one. Which is not fair. Like if there is one study for some medication, and now you're pulling for all, this is also not working? So it doesn't, it makes doesn't sense, there is no. And whole thing, as a Viral Manson, fundamental problem is not GPA or is not ranking, is that the kids are under stress, like there are so many, so I'm a physician by there. There's so many different things going in the society, social determination is called. If anybody knows about this, social determination. There are so many problems people are having, as inflation, housing, which is affect, is not just GPA or ranking. But if you okay, the study done for the ranking, just respect the study, because very hard to take back, but there is no word of the weighted GPA in this one, so it should not be punished. And weighted GPA is a private, is doesn't affect anybody. So even everybody's making comment, I'm glad we both of you kids, you are going on the medical scope, but when you go for residency, let me tell you, I do the application at the Tufts Medical Center. We get more than 5,500 application. We weed the, we weed it out, if anybody has scored below 215. So same thing, do we have any documentation that most of the school, when they get 80,000 application, are they going to look everybody's transcript? Does anybody knows that? Do you know that? Anybody has answer, really?
Sure.
What answer here?
I had two today, but I'm not allowed to, am I allowed to respond?
It's not-
You can respond, it's not-
It's not-
No, I'm just saying, I do.
So let me tell you another thing. You guys all sitting here, you're representing us. You are representing NASA City. So please, put your bias and everything, your conflict in the side. I don't want to be physician for my parent or somebody, because there is always conflict of interest. There is no financial gain, but still there is a conflict. So please make the decision, put your all emotion, everything on the side, respect the study. Why we didn't read study? Can you please tell me, if we're not respecting the study? Did it mention anything about weighted GPA? Did it mention everything about weighted GPA? Let, you want to answer, am I right? Tell me. Tell me answer.
I am listening.
So this, it's not typically a back and forth, this is a comment period, where we listen to what you have to say, and we take your concerns into account.
I know, but here, I'm seeing that, here, there are so many people, there's no transparency at all. This is completely transparent bias from a day-one meeting. Some kids are, they're good on, so they don't care about what happened to the rest of the kids in the near future, so selfishness. I don't want to use that word, but so much selfishness. When you put, when you sit in any position, sitting, respect that seat. Don't make the decision for your, just your kids or for yourself, just think whole entire committee, because you are making the decision for whole entire community. It's go, like even future kids, going to be in the future, they're going to be affected. So I think, again, I'm, when the both principal are here, they will, I'm thinking, so okay, keep the existing system until 2026, keep the weighted GPA, and take out the rank after that. That's my suggestion.
Wei Lin?
So it was, when Dr. Andrew present how the weighted GPA was calculated, I was kind of shocked. Like, I have a senior at high school, and of the four years, like, I review the course catalog, like, every year, to help him select the class and like, look at things. Like, never in the catalog was written that certain courses would not be counted as towards the GPA. So this is news to us. And in his example, there was this one student who like aced on all the AP and honor class, but got Cs and Ds in the unleveled class. Like, I'm not sure whether this is a real-life example, because for us, like, every course count, because how we calculate the weighted GPA remains a mystery to us. Like, we felt like certain class might not count, but we don't know which one. So we, my son works hard on every single one class, and like, it's kind of hard to understand that there will be a student who intentionally sabotage some of the class, because it doesn't count towards GPA. Because like, the principal and all the BOE members said, the college will look at the transcript, so it will not just look at the GPA. So I think it's kind of unwise for that student to do that. And the second is, my second comment is regarding Mr. Claffey's comment about why do we need weighted GPA? So last year, when my son was a junior, I attended the college application session hosted by Sals, and in it, it introduced us, the- by Sals, and in it, it introduced us the Navian system. I'm not sure like the parents here like know about that. So basically, it's a college application system, and in it, one of the thing I found is very cool, is called a scattergram. So scattergram is, it shows us like a university, you clicked in, there's a graph where it puts like the dotted for each past student who applied to that college. It listed like, it put, put them in a position based on their GPAs and their SAT scores. So, and also the dot has different color, like whether they got admitted. So I found that's very useful for us to evaluate, like where my kid stands and in the past, historically, student with similar GPA, whether they got admitted or rejected by the college. And what I found out is the weighted GPA is a much better indicator than the unweighted GPAs. So I think, I think that's how this is useful. And my final comment is like, I think data is a good. Like my son actually, I think he's graduating and he wanted to pursue data science. In this day and age, we deal with a lot of data, and it is true, we take all the data with a grain of salt. Like we don't trust a single metric to be an indicator of how good a student is. But I believe the more data we offer to the student, to the college, it's like the more like information we can get from them. So that's why I object of getting rid of the weighted GPA because like I think it's useful for the kids to evaluate how good he's doing at school. Yes, it's not, it does not tell the whole story. Not a single metric will tell the whole story, but I don't believe just because it doesn't tell the whole story, we'll have to get rid of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have two more. I, I'm blowing past the three-minute mark and the 15-minute mark. We only have two more people. I'm just going to keep going, guys.
That's fine.
Okay, so Tushar Sharma?
Hi, good evening. This is Tushar here, Fifth Castle Farm Drive. So I've been in this meetings for the past three, four BO meetings we had, and I think we are trying to get in a catch-22 situation here. I think my last word, your last word. So everybody is trying to just rush through this, and my expectation was not that I'm going to get an answer or we all are going to get an answer today as to what we are going to do with the motion you passed in May. If you look at the class rank, and I think the primary issue with that was that students are cheating and all that, and what I've heard from, from the gentleman over here and from you, ma'am, is it not a issue with the privacy or the security of the system that kids can go in and change or look into other, other students' class rank? I think that's the problem. But leave aside the class rank, let's, let's take it out of the equation right now. You are going to lower the bar if you just switch to an unweighted GPA. Instead of pulling kids up, maybe you offer art students and arts honors or arts AP class, culinary students, culinary honors and culinary AP class? Why do you want to pull down students who are academically good, excellent that? Why do you want to pull them down? Just to, you know, reward or appreciate students across the spectrum? Look into that. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. And last on our list is Sean Rogers.
Everybody, my name is Sean Rogers. I kind of walked into a hornet's nest. I was expecting sort of a sleepy, you know, Board of Education meeting and a lot of angry people, but, but basically, first I want to commend everybody for staying here near 10 o'clock at night for, for something they're very passionate about. It's always hard to, you know, find that dividing line between searching for proficiency and then searching for like the space for creativity because one is too static and one is, you know, you know, creates excellence, but at the cost of sometimes children's like happiness, like in Asia where they're having stomach ulcers because they're so stressed out about high school and getting good grades and things. So good for you all, that's not why I came here actually, but I just thought I'd talk about Halloween for a second and how disappointed I was by Halloween. The, I won't take your time, but basically, I thought it was going to be a big deal here when I was a kid. It was totally awesome, it was like a party on the streets, and it was the one night where the tables got turned, the kids were in charge, they're all wearing masks, and nobody could control them. And I feel like we sort of lost that. I feel like they're all getting carded by their moms to their houses. I didn't get one trick-or-treater, there's not very many people out there, at least not where I live. And it's kind of sad, and obviously no one person has control over those things, but at the same time, I think we need to let, now, you know, especially since this doesn't apply to high school, but applies to, you know, the younger kids, they really need to, you know, let kids be kids. There's one night of the year where they could be as mischievous as they want, and if the cost of it is having some eggs thrown in your house or some toilet paper, you know, thrown over your car or whatever, you know, so be it. People got to have that outlet, and I think we're losing the tradition if all we think it is about is like, you know, playing dress-up and going door-to-door with your mom, getting candy, you know? To me, that's pretty lame, and I think we need to encourage a little bit of rebelliousness, a little bit of live-free-or-die attitude and that. So that's all I wanted to say, had nothing to do with all the, you know, severe stuff that's been talked about here, but thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. And that is the end of our second public comment. One more thing to go through is, do we want to do board member comments before we go into our non-public? I'm sorry, I, board member comments, you can say whatever you want now, Christina.
Yay, I love getting to say whatever, does everyone have to listen to?
No.
Damn. All right.
Put your mic on though, so they can actually hear you.
That makes sense. So what I would like to say, I was thrilled to be on the parent negotiation team and take my responsibility to the city very seriously. And on June 2nd, Ms. Bishop had texted me to tell me I had missed three negotiation meetings. I was horrified to hear that because I hadn't been included on the emails. I had no idea that anything had been scheduled yet, and I don't know how I can be somewhere if I don't know where I'm supposed to be. Ms. Bishop blamed our admins. Everyone knows we have a miscommunication issue within this district, and I've been working with several organizations, fighting to change that lack of transparency by reaching out and listening to the needs of our communities and figure out how we can best meet them where they are, reaching out to not only local nonprofits, but wraparound services for families and future training opportunities for teachers. I'm incredibly proud of the amount of time and effort I've put into being out in the community and talking to people of all different opinions, faiths, values, and ideals, and I look forward to continuing it with our parent listening sessions. And as soon as next week, I am hoping to plan on adding weekly time at the Nashville Public Library so I can encourage people to come visit and have one-on-one conversations there and not feel judged for asking what they may think are silly questions. Unfortunately, at the date of our last meeting, October 11th, I was scheduled to co-host one of those parent listening sessions. I ensured we had a quorum here. I reached out to Ms. Bishop first thing that morning and to let her know that I would be at the parent listening session. Ms. Bishop's response to me was that, was to say that she was removing me from the negotiation team for being unprofessional. Her responded by reminding her it was incredibly unprofessional to not be included in the scheduling notice. I was incredibly disheartened when I watched that replay of that meeting. I have many faults and qualities of my own and for the negotiation I had called out on, it was only after receiving that phone call that no parent ever wants to get, saying my kid needed to go get picked up from school right then. That is the only contract negotiation that the scheduling issue is within my awareness, let alone my control. And yet, when I watched that video, I felt very thrown under the bus. Shockingly, I'm still not on the scheduling emails. This last time, it was blamed on the superintendent. Before our meeting today, I had approached Ms. Bishop to speak to her privately, and I had wanted to handle this just as adults privately, out of the public, out of needs for commentary, and you were very quick to tell me how it was my fault for not emailing out to ask about the dates that I hadn't known about, and that was when I realized that, Ms. Bishop, I voted for you as president because you were the person I looked up to most on this board. I have always loved the fact that you are a strong, independent, educated woman, you're the single mom boss, and that is what I would kill to be someday and look half as good doing it. And I thought that that would all translate into better leadership skills, but as of this week, as of, as of the last couple of months and our few interactions, I'm at the point now where I feel like, I feel like that while I can understand that president is hard, and you receive far more hate than any of us deserve, I don't know, no, but I'm But it's not fair to put me down or put any other member of this team down or set a member of this team up for failure by putting something out very last second. If you legitimately found out last second, that happens, but there have been times where that wasn't the case. I need you to please learn to trust and delegate to your team. As a leader, I expect at the absolute least honesty, integrity, dedication, and a willingness to be open-minded. Most importantly, humility, because you're a badass president, but it's not cool to throw people under. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Board member comments? Mr. Claffey?
Yeah, I feel the need to respond. I tried to find the scatter plot from Navians, and from, the ones that I found, it's, they use a 4.0 scale. So I, I'll look into it though, just to see if there you, it's self-reported by students, at least the Navian scatter plot that I could find, asks students to self-report, and the Y-axis has a maximum of 4.0, not 5.3. So the second point, I was, we were asked kind of point-blank if we had talked to, maybe I'm getting this wrong. I read, we received a chart, the members of the board received a chart, and maybe 12 schools are listed here, and the chart shows whether they, whether these schools recalculate GPA. The majority do. I emailed the five or six that, this chart says they, that don't recalculate. I've received emails from MIT, I just sent out this morning, I've received responses from MIT and the University of Chicago. Both schools said that weighted GPA will, will not put our students at a disadvantage. MIT, in fact, it shows you, you could go online and see how MIT calculates GPA. I don't know if, someone brought up the fact that they, they don't believe that a big school like Northeastern would go through every application and recalculate, and as I said at our last meeting, I spoke with an admission person a couple of months ago who told me that they do, in fact, go through every single one of the 90,000 or so applications. So at our last meeting, I asked parents to come back with evidence that our students are at a disadvantage because we're eliminating rank in class. And everyone who spoke, not a single person who spoke, told us that they spoke with an admissions officer who told them point-blank, yes, your student needs to be ranked to get in. Not one.
Thank you. Ms. Oden?
No, on a lighter note, I just want to address the man about Halloween. First time in, in a few years we've had it, and I did have high school students come to my door, and it was probably the highest number I've had in five, five or 10 years. So Halloween is alive, I guess at least in my neighborhood, so.
Ms. Johnson?
I'd like to thank all the parents for coming again tonight. I know it was a long meeting and somewhat stressful, but Ms. Oden, I bought 185 pieces bag of candy last night, and we had a bowl left, so I don't know what happened to them in my neighborhood last night. But it's a time for kids to have a good time, and I just want to say that my grandson was dressed up as a little monkey last night. It was the cutest thing, he's two and a half. That's the pleasure you get when you're a grandparent, you know? But thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Brown?
I do respect everyone for coming out and sharing their feelings this evening. I always appreciate public comment and emails to the board, and hopefully it's on other subjects too. We really like to hear from you, so thanks a lot.
Ms. Lamphier?
No comment tonight, thanks.
Okay. That just leaves me. The only comment I have is I am sorry that Ms. Raymond left. I am not going to speak to the reasons why, but I think as a board, we all appreciate her and support her loss, and I know that we sent her a peace lily, so hopefully that brings her a little bit of solace, even though it's, it won't replace a person. But just want to thank Ms. Raymond for taking care of herself and, and going home when she needed to, and let's take an opportunity to just love our loved ones. Okay, so we're going into non-public now. Jess, what is the, over there, what is the, the reasons for going into non-public? Because we have to legally say why we're going into non-public.
I don't actually know what the non-public meeting is about.
Back to Neil.
So, let's see here.
Thank you.
It's son of a new business, so it's the.
Yeah, so the recommendation to approve the national school district participation. Hudson, student assignment, would that be rendered proposed action ineffective? Would it be, render a proposed action ineffective? Would that be the reason or pertains to preparing or carrying out actions regarding terrorism? I don't think that's accurate.
So that's the one, Jess, those are the reasons to seal the minutes?
All right, so.
Personnel is, we're going into non-public for personnel.
Oh, for personnel, oh.
And then those are the seal the minutes legalities that we have to do. So I'm looking for a motion to go into non-public because we're going to be speaking about personnel. So Ms. Darling made the motion, and Ms. Oden seconded. All those in favor of going into non-public, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are now in non-public. It is 9:46. Bye.
Seconded.